Budget highlights. Key services that we provide, obviously, one of our most important responsibilities is implementing policies, initiatives, ordinances, et cetera, that are established by the Board of Selectmen. Our office also doubles as the Human Resources Department for the town. And that includes labor relations, benefits, recruitment, retention, employee development, just, you know, the full spectrum of HR services. We also manage our risk management function, including our workers' compensation and general liability matters. We are responsible for budget development and do work very closely with Amy on that as well. We are also providing economic development support, so we are staffing the EDC and coordinating a number of our economic development initiatives. So, the main increase in our budget for the upcoming year, we have an anticipated maternity leap in my office and are looking for some funds to help with some part-time staffing while Melissa will be out on her maternity.
Sorry. It's just Chris.
So, that is what that is for.
When did that happen?
Let's clarify that Chris doesn't know. I don't have enough insurance for that. Let's move on.
And then, the other item where we're expecting an increase is we have already been made aware of at least four upcoming retirements in the fiscal year. We may have some additional ones. We have some other folks who are exploring retirements in the upcoming fiscal year. And so, just as an expense related to that is that when we do need to recruit for those replacements, we need to advertise in online sources with professional associations, et cetera. So, that, again, is just our estimate based on knowing that in addition to normal attrition, we have a number of retirements coming.
And that's the whole town, not your department, right? Because you have four people in the department.
I'm sorry, correct. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. So, the advertising expenses for our various vacancies that happen throughout the town are budgeted out of the manager's office.
Do you anticipate that there would be a net savings, though, as you bring in?
There could be. There could be, right? So, usually what you'll see particularly for our folks who are represented by bargaining groups is they have, at that point in their career, reached the maximum of the salary range. And oftentimes, folks are brought in at a lesser step. So, there's a very good possibility that there would be salary savings. Under General Government, so this budget includes a number of our sort of town-wide expenses, so our tuition reimbursement program for our employees, our copier imprinting funds, our town-wide telephone service fund, so this is for our landlines essentially, organization-wide training and development funds, and our postage for all departments. And a large part of this increase is due to our telephone service contract for the new system, as well as anticipated service calls, so it's a little over $10,000. We have also budgeted a $3,700 allocation for executive coaching. I had touched on this during our budget presentation about two weeks ago now. We were able to reallocate $3,000 in savings from elsewhere within the general government budget to help offset this cost. So, really, the true increased cost would be about 700 to the budget, but think that this would offer really just an amazing opportunity on an annual basis for at least one member of our mid-level managers or upper-level managers to be able to have this opportunity. And for community services, this is also the Board of Selectmen budget. It's essentially flat. This includes the first select person stipend, funding for various commission clerks, our legal notices, and some of our membership organizations such as CCM. We also include funding for our outside agencies that are not social services-related. And in the proposed budget, we had level-funded the outside agency requests, but we do have for later this afternoon flagged discussion, so you can see which agencies have asked for increased funding. And those agencies that asked for increased funding of $1,000 or more, we invited in just to speak briefly to you for why they were looking for that request. And then, again, later in the afternoon, we will be asking you to decide if you would like to, from a policy perspective, increase the amount that we're funding to those outside agencies. Great. Melissa's going to take it from here.
So, moving on to health, under Tab 5 in your book, the line item for health is our contribution to the Farmington Valley Health District. And as you know, FVHD does serve as our local health department. It covers a total of 10 towns, including us. This line item is going up 7.55% in fiscal year '21, driven by a couple of factors. One, the per capita assessments increasing from $6.05 to $6.50. We did have a slight increase in our population, so we'll pick up a little bit of an additional cost there. Secondly, as you heard from Jennifer Kurtanis, the Executive Director of the district, back in January, when she presented an update on the strategic plan, the budget does include funding to meet the objectives in the five-year strategic plan for the district. Primarily, it's investment in additional staff and expertise for the district, as well as an investment in accreditation. So, again, as you heard from her back in January through her presentation, they do anticipate additional increases for the remaining years of the plan as well. So, for areas of focus for fiscal year '21, we'll continue to support the work of the Economic Development Commission. The EDC's current work plan, which you've reviewed, is outlined there under those four subbullets. One, continuing our business outreach events. Secondly, continuing our outreach to our largest employers and taxpayers. So, we're having monthly meetings with one large employer or taxpayer every month, so that we're visiting them all at least once per year. In addition, focusing on revisions to the existing business incentive policy, as well as updating our marketing materials, which we can use for tourism purposes, recruiting businesses, and for realtors as well. So, we'll continue to work with the Finance Department on improving our financial management practices. You heard about the big one, the implementation of MUNIS, the new financial software system under Amy's presentation. We'll continue to refine our capital budgeting, especially as we complete the Town Facilities Master Plan and the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, incorporating those findings into our six-year CNR and CIP plans. We will continue to evaluate opportunities for sharing resources, shared services with the Board of Education. As you know, we're currently piloting shared services in the area of finance with Amy providing services right now to the Board of Education and the shared accountant position that we hope to bring on board very soon. Secondly, we talked about a little bit, Maria mentioned, under the IT presentation that the Technology Task Force is conducting research on potential shared services models for IT as well. Okay. So, we are currently negotiating five of our six labor contracts in this fiscal year, and we hope to settle those soon. So, for the next fiscal year, we'll be focusing on implementing any negotiated changes. And, of course, we'll continue to monitor the state budget and how that impacts us. Moving on to insurance, so we're in a...
Did you see your battery? You said it was low. So, you're not plugged in.
Correctly. It is plugged in.
It's like a bloody ransomware.
You have your...
I was gonna say, this is...
Yep.
IT ransomware right here. He really wants to fast-track that extra personality. I should never have mentioned that.
Just give me my laptop.
It's getting eight minutes to boot up.
Where'd I put that?
Budget's right here.
No, no.
In the meantime, if you want to flip to Tab 19 in your book.
We're on the insurance tabs?
We can go by the tabs. Yeah.
Is this your favorite tab, Sean?
Insurance?
I didn't know.
This is the most depressing tab, usually. There's nothing we can do about it.
Is it under Town Manager?
My favorite's the Capital tab, actually.
That's a fun one.
CNR's 19. Are we on General Liability?
Sorry. Okay, where?
No, I think we're on the Health Insurance.
All right. So, we'll quickly touch on both general liability and workers' comp. That's what you're seeing, the line items in Tab 19. We did receive favorable indicators from KERMA, our insurer, for both liability auto property as well as workers' comp, so we expect those to be flat. The changes that you're seeing in the line items are actually related to the way that we charge back to WPCA. So, as an enterprise fund, we do allocate their portion to them as a chargeback. So, we wanted to make sure we were really charging them accurately, so we did a bit of an analysis. And after digging into it, we realized we did need to make a couple of adjustments to more accurately reflect what they should be absorbing on that front. So, for liability auto property, we reallocated a larger share to WPCA. For workers' comp, it was the opposite. So, the general fund's picking up a little bit more there, just to more accurately reflect what we should be charging WPCA. So, in total, the reduction is about $3,000 for the general fund.
And so, move this forward a year. The, is it, assuming there were no losses and assuming it was the same, assuming the results were the same, this would be zeroed out?
Right. With the exception of any potential change in either exposure, so if we do have, for some reason, payroll increases that we hadn't estimated, that might potentially impact us slightly, or...
Yeah, and we did factor in like a half a percent just for exposure.
Just for exposure.
So, that's included in the budget.
Right. Or if something out of the ordinary happened, I can't think of what it would be, but, you know, mid-year, perhaps we add a piece of, you know, we add something to the fleet that's not a replacement, but in addition to, or a new building came online, that would be in addition to. We would typically try and, again, just budget for that because that would essentially increase our premium.
Splash pad, for example.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Because that would be a new facility.
Okay. So, if this is just a... Thank you.
Double the GL for that thing?
Yeah, and just a quick point, KERMA, our insurance carrier, one thing I do really appreciate about them is they really, I think, subscribe to their philosophy, which is member-owned, member-driven. So, they exclusively work with local public agencies in Connecticut, and they have a number of committees. Melissa is part of the Risk Management Advisory Committee, and I chair their operating and underwriting committee. So, again, I think that us being actively involved in KERMA, they provide a lot of risk management services to us, they provide training to us. I think we're just getting a lot of value there.
They review contracts as well, so they'll take a look at all of our contracts if we ask them to, to check out the insurance and indemnification sections as well, so they do that. Health insurance is Tab 25.
Go for it. Why didn't you go for that?
So, less of a conversation than last year, which is a good thing, because the fund is in a much better position than it was a year ago. So, we anticipate that the fund balance at the end of fiscal year '21 will be 24% of expected claims, and our goal is 25.
25, at a minimum, so we're pretty much there.
We are having a better year, though, from a claim experience than we anticipated.
Yeah.
Yeah, that as well.
Do we feel better about the new firm we're working with in terms of projecting there? Because that was part of what got us in trouble in the past, right, is we weren't doing a good job of, on the outside, of projecting experience?
Yes. They've been amazing. I don't know, Amy or Melissa, would you guys like to jump in on a few, just the things that they've been really helpful with?
I think, overall, they're pretty much an extension of our staff. Like, I don't talk to them like consultants. I just talk to them like another staff person. Pretty much, you make a phone call, you send an email, you get a response back super quick. When they take us through their numbers, they take us through them in detail and what went into them and how they came up with their projections. So, I didn't work with our previous firm, so I don't have anything to speak of in comparison to, but I'm super pleased with them.
We get monthly claims, claims monitoring and analysis, which is really helpful. We're meeting with them on a quarterly basis, and the Board of Ed participates in that as well, just to stay on top of trends, issues, really proactive in terms of, again, on their part, monitoring trends, helping us dig into things. You know, for example, might be the recent Connecticut prime.
Oh, sure.
bill issued, Joanna.
Oh, yes. So, that was a major find on their behalf. We got sent a bill for $30,000.
All over 30,000.
From CT Prime, saying that that's what we owed based on our claims experience from the prior year. So, we forwarded the email to our consultants, and we said, "This looks a little off. Can you dig into this?" They dug into it, they looked at all the detail behind it. CT Prime actually owed us a refund of $6,000 or $8,000.
That's the stop-loss carrier?
Yes, our former carrier. Yes, yeah. So, that's, yeah, I think that's just a really great example.
We're out of that mess, right?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to go back and review prior years in there from CT Prime?
I guess we could.
We could.
Because if they were off by that much in one year, were they perhaps off by other years, now that we're no longer on the board?
We could have them up there.
Additionally, so, yeah, talk to me about stop-loss insurance this time. Expenditures are up projected pretty substantially?
Sure. And this was just a very conservative, conservative approach, wanting to say, "Okay, this is sort of what the market is doing." However, their unit that looks at stop-loss for us, they're taking a look at it again. We don't think it's going to be that high, probably, it won't be anywhere close to that. But, again, just for budgeting purposes, because we're budgeting so early, and in terms of when they're going out and looking at stop-loss for us, we just didn't want to be short in that regard. But that is most likely an area where we would have savings.
Yeah, let's get that firmed up before we send this to the Board of Finance.
Who gave you that number?
Yeah, the consultant provided that number to us, again, just for budgeting purposes. Rather have, you know, too much than not enough, but we don't think that the number's going to come in anywhere, probably likely near that, that point.
But I can see where they put that number, and because that number gave me a little bit of alarm, too, when I first looked at it.
601 doesn't seem right.
But if you Google it, the percentage increase is actually that or higher right now.
That's a 20% increase.
Yeah. I haven't seen a 25%.
Are you talking about municipal, or are you talking about stop-loss in general?
When I Googled it, it was municipal.
Yeah, and I'm surprised, because, again, hasn't our experience been above average?
Right, and most likely that. Like Maria said, it won't come in that high because of those factors.
Yeah.
But if you're looking at what the market's doing and you're going to put together a budget, you're going to go based on market trend, and that is the market trend.
But we do think we're going to come in lower than that.
But, again, that's self-contained in the fund, so it doesn't change.
Right.
Right.
The operating budget, anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
It just helps our reserve at the end of the year if we become positive.
Yeah, let's try to get that firmed up, though, because we're going to spend a half hour on that one when we get to the public hearing.
Anything else on insurance?
Yeah. We, our cyber, our EPL, our DNO, that's all embedded in the liability coverage, right? We have adequate limits. We've looked at that again. I'm not going to ask what they are in public, but we should make sure that they're keeping up with the trends.
Yeah, we can get that to you, too, if you want to see.
Also, the social engineering endorsement coverages and all the other throw-ins that we need to be in there, because there's a lot of towns that, across the country, that, oops, they didn't have the right coverage in place, so the taxpayers have had to foot bills for claims.
Yeah. KERMA has included cyber coverage through a separate carrier underneath our general liability, so it's included.
Yeah. I would like somebody that I trust, like you guys, looking at that to make sure you're good with it, not KERMA. Because at the end of the day, the endorsements and the individual coverages really matter. So, they can say we have cyber, there's 20 agreements in cyber. So, cyber is, it's a, they just say cyber, but there's a lot of different ways that a claim can come in and how we can get hit with cost. So, and I'm not saying we go overinsured, but a couple of bucks ends up getting you additional insurance agreements that can really make a difference if we do get hit. There's also restoration coverage, there's betterment coverage, there's a lot of coverage out of the marketplace in the event that there is a loss, we'd be able to get, because it helps put us in a better position if something does happen.
All right, and then...
Melissa, this is Mike. I think Sean's point is really good, and we are probably better to be, as he said, overinsured or have more insurance, so that they have security on the hook for something.
Yeah, and I will say, KERMA's done a really good job picking it up in terms of cyber. You know, their big thing is call us immediately when something happens, if and when something happens. I know they had a client who waited a week, ended up paying a ransom, and, I mean, they, KERMA was still there to help out, and they, you know, covered it, but they said they could have perhaps taken better action and not, you know, had better outcomes if they had known right away, so.
The carriers are staffed for 24/7, and the moment you find out about it, you've got to report it, because the longer you let it wait, the more expensive it gets. And it's not cheap these days.
All right. And then, our office has one proposed project. It's a compensation and classification study. This project would provide us with a townwide assessment of our current job classifications, our job descriptions, and an analysis of our existing pay grades. To the best of our knowledge, we have actually never had one of these studies conducted here, which is a bit surprising. And there are a lot of benefits to doing a study like this. You know, it's something I would recommend, that we really try to do an organization-wide study about once every 10 to 15 years, and then update as needed in between. So, a lot of times, the updates in between might be, perhaps there's a retirement, we want to restructure, or, you know, various reasons, somebody makes reclassification requests. But, again, having one of these comprehensive organization-wide studies probably once every 10 to 15 years would be a very, very good practice for us. Some of the benefits to doing such a study, we can ensure that our job descriptions reflect current expectations, current technology, modern terminology. We have some of our job descriptions that are decades old at this point, and they're just very dated. We can also ensure that our pay grades reflect current market conditions. But another important point, and this is where I think, again, this would be a huge, huge benefit to us internally, is trying to ensure pay parity among internal classifications, and really basing that upon scope, scale, level of responsibility, technical knowledge, and educational requirements of the positions. Right now, we have issues that pop up on a pretty routine basis, again, in terms of what we would call internal parity, within classifications, within bargaining groups, amongst bargaining groups. So, again, we just really think that this is something that would add a lot of value to the organization.
So, we've been doing this for as long as I've been on the board, so how is this different than what we've been doing at the personnel level as the positions come up and as we do?
Sure.
Because we've done, like, the chief's analysis, we've done the department head analysis, there's been a lot of that that's been done in-house.
Sure. So, we have done some. I think that's, you know, something, again, that we've really tried to do the last couple of years, is an absence. Typically, we would have a methodology and a scoring system that would assign points to positions, whether it's a new position or we're looking at a reclassified position. Basically, you would have categories similar to this, there would be points assigned. We don't have just a base classification system to work with. So, an absence of that the last two years, I think we've really done the best to utilize some different analytical tools to try to sort of get there with doing benchmark, you know, salary benchmarking. You know, we will look to other communities for job descriptions that are more current. We've been really also trying to do our very, very best to look at internal, you know, pay comparisons, but, again, the challenge there is that we don't sort of have that base classification system to work with. But, again, I think that we've done a pretty, pretty good job of using reasonable analysis in absence of it. But, again, that's, you know, maybe one position at a time, where this would look at literally every single, you know, full-time position we have, as well as a handful of our part-time positions.
So, example, we would look at the entire Public Works Department as one from Band 1 all the way up?
Yeah, every single position within the entire Public Works Department. So, whether you're a mechanic, or a truck driver, or a crew leader, a road foreman, every single position.
So, I want to say this delicately, but there's no way anything's going down, so...
Sometimes, sometimes that happens, and it's...
With the union negotiation?
Sure. So, what we kind of refer to in our field, we call that red-circling people. And so, sometimes, the results of the study, if they show that we're...
Way overcompensating.
Way over, or sometimes it's even internally, that we're just way overcompensating somebody. Usually, they're frozen at where they are until, over time, general wage increases catch up to them. And then, if they leave, the incumbent, I'm sorry, the person who's hired to follow that incumbent comes in at the appropriate pay grade and the appropriate step.
Interesting.
So, yeah, so we just kind of call that red-circling, usually, when that happens.
Usually, red anything's a bad thing, so.
Yeah. And sometimes, it's the opposite. Sometimes you find, right, that we're not, you know, compensating people adequately, and sometimes people are right on target. So, it is kind of just, there's just a range of what happens. And then, there's a process to really kind of work through that if we find out that we really need to do a full adjustment, and if we do need to start gradually, you know, increasing other individuals' salaries. So, there is sort of a whole nother process to the implementation phase. But, again, I think a really good outcome for this as well would be having current job descriptions for us, because that is something we're really lacking right now.
Yeah, just on your point, I think that, yes, we've been doing this all along, looking them, but we've really been doing it one-off, kind of case by case, as you guys said. It's sort of created some internal equity issues, because as we take them one at a time, we're not, they weren't always looked at in terms of how they compare organization-wide. So, I think, like Maria said, we need a good base to work off of and make sure that we kind of clean that up, start fresh.
Do we have someone in mind that we've looked at to use for that?
So, there are a lot of different firms that do this, particularly municipal work. We do have a list of just maybe, I think it was maybe six or eight firms, just initially to reach out to if we do receive funding. We would do an RFQ for this particular type of a study and select a vendor from that.
I can see us getting substantial pushback to put this in CNR. Our friends down the hall typically don't like us to do studies in CNR. This would be more of a cash, or if it's a one-time hitter, you put it in the operating budget.
Yeah, so what I would advise, particularly for a project like this, a study like this usually takes, I would say, a minimum of 18 months, so it's likely that it's not going to be neat and tidy within one fiscal year. So, if it's in a CNR project, that gives us the ability to roll the funds forward for the project, so we would be able to pay the consultants. And then, another piece with the job analysis and the job descriptions, you know, I find it's helpful and beneficial to have union leadership involved early and upfront. But that's also, you know, adds to the time in terms of both preparing and then implementing. But just, again, the preparation of the study, I would say we're probably looking at at least 18 months.
And how does that coincide? So, we're negotiating five of the six contracts. Presumably, those get settled and closed before we do this. Are we then having to redo that work, again?
So, my recommendation would be, hopefully, we would have everything done for the next contract, so we could be talking about any potential implementation within the next contract.
So, what are we looking at? Are we looking at three-year contracts?
Yeah, for the, yeah, for most of the groups, yeah.
Okay. Just trying to make sure the timing lines up. And then, obviously, we need to be transparent with the Board of Finance, that there's a potential, not an assumption, but a potential that salary line items will go up as a result of this or change.
Some could, some could. But that, again, would be negotiated as well with the unions.
But that's, and, again, if we're underpaying people, we should be clarifying that and fixing that, for sure. But, again, if we're going to embark on the study, we just need to be eyes wide open with everybody that's involved.
Right. Yeah, and something that's important, too, and if we do get the study funded when we're asking questions, with the pay parity piece, oftentimes, we do see in our municipal setting, there can oftentimes be gender equity issues, particularly with positions that were more traditionally held by women. So, you know, a good example I'll often use is, you know, sometimes you would see social workers with a master's degree required, or a librarian with a master's degree required, being paid less than code enforcement officials who were required to only have a high school degree. Again, sort of that difference between positions traditionally held by men versus women, we do tend to see that a lot in our municipal setting. So, that's, again, something that really will hopefully, you know, if we select the right consultant and we're doing the proper internal and external analysis, it will help us with pay parity in that regard as well.
That'll be a specific deliverable, though?
Yeah. That would be very...
Any gender gaps in the pack, because that's important.
Exactly. That's very important.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, again, we're not suggesting that they are there, but they could be there.
They could be.
If they are there, let's get rid of them, because they shouldn't be there.
Exactly.
Well, it'd be interesting, because we have, we have a leadership team, which is strikingly and proudly made up predominantly of females, which I think is, this whole town hall is filled with, you know, leaders who are females. I'd be interested to see how this comes across.
Yeah.
But...
But, again, if there is in the rank and file, we need to stamp it out if it exists.
Yeah. Now, Chris, to that point, Chris, no, you're absolutely right. At this point, we believe that we are actually the only town in the state with a town manager from a government where the manager, deputy, and finance director are all women. And I'm, at this point, I think, only one of three female managers in the state, so, yeah.
2.66 grandma, triple nine.
But it is something that I think that we are really tuned into as the general.
They got to get rid of us, Wendy and Jackie are on the show. All right.
Great, thanks, thank you.
Thank you. What's next?
You're up, Mike.
Oh, wow, you just ripped your four, didn't you?
Yeah, it was like, you weren't even looking.
All right, Amy gets an A plus for efficiency.
I should have, I should have just asked quickly, did anybody have questions on probate?
No.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Wood.
Start off with planning and building. Overall, it's a point nine one percent increase of the two departments. Planning is actually a decrease of just under three quarters of a percent. Building is an increase mainly due to, and I'll talk about it later, is salary increases, step and contractual requirements. This is a budget that maintains the current staffing levels at seven and a half staff members between the building department and planning. We've already talked about this in the past, but you know our functions. We're the primary from the planning and land use perspective, providing staffing to the various land use commissions, also implementing the various land use regulations, ordinances, code enforcement, et cetera, across the board. While the building department, they're maintained with implementing the state building code, the town underground tank regulations, and deals with some other, you know, public safety issues as it relates to buildings and structures. I just want to get two figures out, especially to the building department. Last year, we processed two thousand eight, two thousand eighty-seven permit applications for construction value of a hundred and three million, four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The building department has been extremely busy with inspections, and Henry and Dwight have been doing a fantastic job of keeping it together. Really, I really want to point those two out because they, you know, they're doing, they did two thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine inspections last year. This is all the various projects, and I'll, later in my presentation, I'll talk about where we stand in some of those projects.
That's an astounding number for basically nine and a half employee, full-time employees.
You know, example, the previous community I came from, the town of Waterford, similar-sized population, they had three full-time inspectors. Really, we have one and a half, because Dwight's position is shared with the town of Bloomfield. So he's only here Monday, Tuesday and every other Friday. And yet, they are still keeping the ball rolling on inspections and, just like I said, really a fantastic job. So some of the areas of focus for this budget, we're going through, doing and amending our zoning regulations, kind of making it more user-friendly. We're hoping that that actually, the zoning commission may be sending to a public hearing in April, but that project in itself is still, it's kind of a living project. It will, it will live on to the next fiscal year, because there are certain things out of what we're doing right now, such as the planned area development regulations, the sign regulations, the parking regulations and the town ride zoning regs that we did not tackle in the first project. We did not look at the center code, although the zoning commission wants to look at the center code. So that whole, that comment of reworking zoning regulations is going to be ongoing projects. The main goal of these projects are to, my next point, is making it a user-friendly format to address issues that we've heard, we've heard of feedback from either residents or developers, how our regs are confusing, or just the results that occurred at some of our regulations where, you know, maybe it wasn't exactly what the commission envisioned. The other, just the overall implementing the goals and objectives, the plan of conservation development. That's that document by state law, we're required to update once every ten years. When I say we, the planning commission. The planning commission actually has taken on the task of updating the P O C D at year three. So we're discussing it right now, we're looking at areas of economic development, affordable housing, and sense of place as some of the focus that this new update will be. And we're doing it outside of our ten-year mandate. What's nice about this is that ten-year window will start after we finish our update this year, so we're going to be able to push it out further. And we're doing this in-house, so I'm working with the planning commission, I will be doing that work. We will not be engaging the services of a consultant, just like the zoning commission reg updates. That's something I, we've been working on in-house. The last one is implementing our new building permit software, we'll talk about that later. We're looking to switch vendors, because our contract is expiring in July. And I could, I'll go into further detail about that when we get into our capital. So I said it earlier, the really highlights, we have one increase, it's in the building department. It's relatively small numbers, you know, three thousand of the eight thousand dollars that's part of the increase is due to negotiated contractual step increases. The other kind of challenges or trends that we're seeing, I already said earlier about how we really want to focus on going one step further and making the, looking at ways that this is more of a user-friendly process. You know, some of the comments that we've, I've heard from people, whether they're anecdotal or they're current, they kind of, they allude to the fact that the process is not user-friendly, that they just, that for some reason it's confusing. So one of the other projects that we're going to look at, as we're wrapping up the first phase of the zoning regulations update, is looking at doing a handbook that'll kind of guide developers, residents to kind of understand the process. The other kind of trend or challenges, this is a big one, is, I said it last year, that the FEMA flood maps are being updated. Those draft maps will be coming out this spring, which could result in people either being mapped into floodplains or mapped out of floodplains. They did surveys, they have, take the data from the surveys, they've actually re-engineered the study in the maps. I have not seen the maps yet, I've been part of a remap process when I was down in New London County, and it's going to be a luck of the draw which one we're going to get, whether it's going to be a lot of people are mapped out of the floodplain, or a lot of people are going to be mapped in. But either way, just, I want to say, this is something that's big. D E P has contacted us as hosting a meeting in April to, it possibly will be the unveiling of the new draft maps. But you'll hear from people, I mean, Jackie will know as a real estate agent, that's one of the things everyone will ask about when they're first looking at houses. With these new maps, the banks will be aware of it, they will be sending out letters, especially if people get mapped into the floodplain who are not currently in the floodplain. So they may not be too pleased when they find out they have to now carry an insurance policy upwards of five, ten, twenty thousand dollars. Or worse, as people who are in the floodplain now find out that your house is, it's exposed to a higher degree of hazard, therefore, your coverage has to be increased. You know, you may find out people that are paying ten thousand dollars in insurance right now that now will have estimates saying you're going to pay close to twenty or thirty. We have people in town that are paying around twenty thousand dollars in flood insurance right now.
Oh, my gosh.
So those people could feel the pinch when these new maps come out. So I just really, as a public service, it's a challenge that our department will face, but it's also just to, once again, get that word out that this project is coming and will come on, will come online during this fiscal year.
Mike, I will send you an email to remind you, but I would be grateful if you could write up a blurb for my first selectmen's report, so we could start that education.
We just received a discovery report from our meeting, it was back in, I want to say, January or December. It's been that long since we met with FEMA, so yes, that was just issued in the past, like, I don't know, two days.
Yeah, we popped it in the pack out under communication, just to kind of start getting some information out there.
So one of the ideas that I kind of floated with, no pun intended, with Diane Ipkovich at D E P is potentially asking, when the new maps come out, I know they did this in New London County, they had a region meeting, and the region one staff came out, D E P staff was there, and they provided an ability for homeowners to come to the meeting and talk to someone at a federal agency, someone at a state agency, and ask their insurance correct, questions directly to the individuals that will, they'll eventually have to deal with. At the same time, it was a great process to have them actually see the new maps. So I was, I've been asking Diane to possibly schedule that, once these maps come out. And if so, yes, I will kind of get the word out through this board, so that we can make sure people are aware.
Mike, two things, one, there's no appeal process here, when the maps come out, it is what it is, right?
No, there's an appeal process of ninety days, because this is going to be a, unlike, so in two thousand eight, that was the last update in Hartford County, that was a map modernization program where basically they took the nineteen seventy-nine study, and they took an aerial photograph and put the two together and said, here's your new maps. Whether they're right or wrong, here's your maps. This process, however, because it involves surveying, it involves engineering of the survey data, there will be in a ninety-day appeal process.
Okay.
But when that come, when that appeal process starts, the onus is going to be on the applicants or the homeowners to say, hey, I got, I got an engineer, I got a surveyor, I got this, I got that, let me show you my professional data why these maps are incorrect. But it really, it's going to be two engineers, two surveyors fighting it. It won't be homeowner and, and it could be expensive process for the homeowners.
Yeah, well, it could be cheap in the long run. And follow-up question to that, any exposure from town-owned assets potentially get redrawn into the floodplain and commercial, substantial commercial parcels?
So one of the, one of the things that we're, we've been working with is W P C A and the B R M around the W P C A facility. They are watching this process closely, because I've said, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's a time that we entertain either getting the B R M certified as a levy, meaning it'll get removed from the map, or two, is apply what's called for a letter map amendment now. And that, what that means is FEMA looks at the topography, looks at your engineering data and says, okay, this thing, this structure, this property is now out due to topography, due to engineering errors. This, we noticed the engineering error when Gerard Brothers applied for a Loma with, they actually applied for a Clomar, which is a conditional letter map amendment with FEMA, and they were able to demonstrate there was a mathematical error of point zero one in the elevation data for the flood insurance study. And that resulted in with the property as it stands on the map, the floodline up by Iron Horse Boulevard being moved to the, basically, rear third of the property. So there's possibility out there, you know, that's one that, like I said.
Yeah. Yeah, and just, I mean, so individual homeowners, but I mean, is there a point where the municipality gets involved because of the effect of the value on our properties and our taxpayers overall, or do we stay entirely out of the process?
We'll evaluate that as the maps come out and probably advise the town manager through, or the town manager to this board if there's facilities that are affected, such as the W P C A, that it's in our best interest maybe to appeal that. But I mean, until we see a draft map, I, you know, I don't want to comment.
Could go in our favor too, right?
Exactly. And that's the other thing, because that's why we were waiting for a draft map for W P C A, for example. I hate to keep picking on Tony, but the position's been, you know, if it's in our favor, we're not going to spend a dime on fighting the map. If it's, if it's against us, we're going to look at every option available and what makes sense and what is, what we're going to see an economic return in correcting that map.
Okay.
So we wanted to go over and kind of update you on some of the projects. I already told you the value and number of construction, construction permits issued. So public projects, we're still dealing with Henry James Edition, that's been a very large project, very consuming for Henry and Dwight. Commercial projects is kind of a big one, Big Y Construction. Obviously, everyone can see the walls are up now, steel is supposed to be being delivered as we speak. Their anticipated opening date is October one, but with the unusual winter weather that we've had, they may actually be open by September one. So that's going to be on your grand list, that's a new store, fifty-two thousand square feet. McLean Independent Living, that's seventy-four apartment units that are being constructed in a location where the cottages are, the independent living cottages are located. We're meeting with them next week, they're looking to start site work. So very likely, that project will be coming in for building permits probably late June, early July. So it's going to, I, to say that it's going to come in on this fiscal year of twenty twenty-one, it may make it as the last big project in the current fiscal year. But still, that's an extremely large project, you know, the footprint of that building, it connects to Burkholder, it's approximately two hundred, two hundred thousand square feet. It's, it's a huge investment by McLean. The last one is Ensign Bickford Aerospace and Defense, so they finished phase one ahead of schedule. They're actually looking at phase two right now as putting some further investments in this. So this is, you know, some projects that are going on right now. As for residential development, I'm sure everyone hears about this. The ridge at Talcat Mountains, sixty, two hundred sixty-nine out of three hundred and one residential units have been issued permits. Two hundred and eight certificate of occupancies have been issued as of last Thursday. Highcroft, they're working on the second phase, there's forty townhouses, total is two hundred and seventy-two units out there. That's with the apartment development. The townhouses have been permitted at this point, they are really coming along on those townhouses. I anticipate that they'll be coming in for certificate of occupancies this spring. As for Cambridge Crossing, that's off Hoskins Road, there's seventy-nine single-family homes that are part of that development. Nine certificate of occupancies have been issued with eighteen building permits pending. So those are some of the larger resident, I don't know if anyone else has any other residential development questions in town?
What about the one on Climax, the smaller one?
So it's nineteen houses on four and a half acres that was approved. Nineteen houses on four and a half acres approved by the courts as an affordable housing application. Of the nineteen houses, six are under construction. He has sold three affordable units, so he's actually following his plans. He has applied for six additional building permits. We're working on some grade changes, though, that he wants to implement, but, I mean, he's really cruising along on that development.
Yeah, I can see it. They're already on the, they're already on some site work.
You have, like I said, three of them that are affordable units that he sold for individuals making sixty percent of the area median income. So really, I mean, if you look at it, it's a dense development, four and a half acres, but at the same time, you have three new homeowners that just moved to Simsbury that are making it sixty percent of the area median income. So you were able to provide entry-level housing to someone who may not have looked at this community.
Which is outstanding, the problem is that there's sixteen where they're barred from coming in, because they're too high, so.
So. What's the, the sale price of a unit like that?
Two.
And size?
Two, you know, two seventy-five?
Two, no, no, the sixty percentile one was going for two hundred and, I want to say, two hundred twenty thousand dollars.
And what's the size of it?
I don't have, I, I don't know that figure offhand.
Is it like in the twelve hundred square foot, like that?
It would be under like fifteen hundred square feet.
The balance of them are starting in the four hundreds, all right, high three.
Correct, the market rate ones. So, but it's a good thing, I mean, he's building houses and people are buying them, so we're not seeing vacant houses stand. So we want to just hit on a few potential developments. I don't know if everyone's aware, but there's eighteen acres, which is north of the Hoffman Auto Group, basically on top of the hill. It was rezoned, it was originally zoned residential, it was rezoned to commercial. There's been some interest in that, that is a parcel where we could see some significant commercial development in the next year. Powder Forest, there's been interest on the commercial piece that's kind of at the intersection of Hop Meadow Street and Powder Forest Drive. It was approved for sixty-eight thousand square feet of commercial development, we had a group looking to build a hotel there. They seem.
The big area is kind of the big sand pit right now.
That's correct. And then just north of it, if you remember the parcel that was used during two thousand eleven for the D W to bring all the storm damage. That was a, on the master plan, it was shown as being a assisted living facility, which has been purchased by Seaberry. There's been talk on and off that Seaberry may be coming in with something. I think that they've been real occupied with their project in Bloomfield first, so it'll be interesting. Because that's kind of winding down now, so that's a wild card of the mix. And then we have three other, three other potential redevelopment projects in the center of town, they're in various stages. I don't really want to publicly say where those, what projects those are, but they may show their face, and those are kind of wild cards that could see a significant interest in the downtown and are pretty modest-sized developments, each of them.
Good question, though, that, I thought that was Hoffman of Avon, at Simsbury? Aren't they Hoffman of Avon on the sign?
I think they're Hoffman.
Okay, I just, I get confused.
But they're Simsbury, they're located in Simsbury. So we have one C N R project, I kind of discussed this earlier, our building permit software. The current contract expires in July, we, we need to go to a new vendor. I know Amy will kind of vouch me on this, that the customer service is, I don't know.
Horrible.
Yeah. So we are looking to switch to Municity, it is a, a software provider that is, is a vendor through CROG. The capabilities of this software is amazing. Some of the things that allow, I mean, online permitting will still occur. The other sort of capabilities it offers from a construction inspection standpoint, it'll allow the building officials to do their inspections out in the field, take pictures on tablets, upload the reports directly to these files, so then homeowners will be able to see, whoa, I failed my electrical inspection, well, why? And there's a picture why they failed it, along with the inspector's notes. Right now, we're still in the, the days of handwriting our inspection notes, and so if someone were to fail an inspection, you literally have a handwritten note from Dwight or Henry that you got to decipher. So what exactly were they trying to tell me, what my contractor did? The other thing that this will offer is, so the public will be able to go online. The other thing that this will offer is, so the public will be able to go online to sign in and you can enter a property and say, hey, did this property obtain the proper permits for a new roof, finish their basement? Instead of right now, you have to come into the office, you have to, we have to physically search the files and it's multiple files because it's not just what's open, because, you know, there could be closed permits. This will allow the real estate agents, for example, to access our records remotely. So this, it's a really, like, we're really excited, hopefully this is implemented this year. And we looked at, we had, there was two vendors. This was the one vendor that stood out based on their service. We went to the town of Southington to look at how, if they actually have this software right now. We spoke to the town of Milford, Connecticut, that my former employer has it, Town of Waterford. There was a few other communities. We really, we did our research. We felt that this gets, we're really going to get a return on investment on this, on this software. And really, it's going to increase our services that are offered through the building department. And really, the, cutting down on some of the, the admin costs associated with their inspection notes is just, it's amazing to have that ability.
Just to add to that too, the software integrates with the assessor software, so there's no more data manual entry in the department.
It's great.
Does it flag when the permits don't get inspected?
That's a two-for-one.
I don't know, Sean.
So monthly, we're going to get a report on all the permits that are inspected and non-inspected at the bonus selection.
You can review that.
I'm gonna.
So that's it.
Other, other questions?
Good update. Thank you.
All right. Turn next to Kristen.
Good morning. Almost good afternoon. So I'm Kristen Formanak, if we haven't formally met yet. And I'm here to talk to you this morning about the Community and Social Services proposed budget. I think we've had a pretty exciting year this year. We've had some really big accomplishments and we've added some new programs and services. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have this morning. Overall, our budget has not changed that much. Some of the changes that you'll see that I'll talk about later are because of the way that we're managing our funds now and where we're going to be accounting for some of our funds. So that is part of our fluctuation. We have a small increase in the administration costs and that's mostly related to our step increases and our, our negotiated wage increases. And the senior center, there is a small decrease overall. And again, some of that I will talk about later is because of where we're allocating the funds. There is a slight decrease in our senior center transportation program, our dialeride. And the main driver for that is, I'll speak about later, we went out for a bid on our contract this year. We have five-point-seven-one budgeted FTEs in our program. These are some highlights. Senior Services is very important to us. Our senior center is an integral part of the community for our seniors. We provide a very wide range of programs and services, many special events. We very much focus on intergenerational programming with our younger folks in the high school. We offer a lot of programs at the library where we can bring our different generations together. We've recently started adding more veterans programming. We started a monthly coffee hour with our veterans and we are bringing in a variety of speakers. And.
What's, you're probably getting up and creating noise and awareness. How's the attendance of that?
Actually, it's very good. We have a good core group of veterans that have been coming every month. We're advertising through our senior communicator, through flyers, on Facebook. And also, one of our best partners is Resilience Grows Here, which is a project program of the Farmington Valley Health District. So they really help us in promoting this, this effort. And in a few weeks, you will also hear a presentation from a volunteer who works with Resilience Grows Here and is a member of the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. We're going to be asking you to become a Hidden Heroes Town. So you'll hear more about that in a couple of weeks, but that's an exciting new veterans program that we're going to be looking to offer.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that, is that program intergener, I mean, is it a pretty good spread of generations or is it right now skewing towards a certain age?
The veterans programming. We tend to see our older veterans, so our older wars. We don't have a lot of our younger veterans that come to our programs, but the younger veterans tend to go to the programs through Resilience Grows Here. Yeah. And there is a new coffee, coffee talk that just came online through the Hidden Heroes program that's actually been added on at our Simsbury Starbucks. And that's a lot of our younger veterans and their families. We have weekly and monthly congregate meals. As you know, last year, we added on our Tuesday Lunch Cafe program. That has gone very well. Our numbers aren't quite as high as we had hoped, but it still is sustaining itself. And we also have seen our employees enjoy that option as well. We have many games and clubs, a lot of fitness programs, education, music, socialization, our trips and outings, which are also supported through our Dialeride Enhanced Program so that we're able to provide transportation for our out trips. And we're the municipal agent for the elderly by statute. Many programs or services through social services. We maintain a very robust and healthy juvenile review board, youth services programming. We've partnered very well with our schools to provide those services. We've continued to add on to our sensory-friendly series. We're looking to provide some new programs this spring. We're going to be bringing in animal assisted therapy, a presentation on that, and that's through our youth service programming. With social services, we continue with our direct service, making sure that people have their basic benefits and are able to hopefully thrive in our community. Our biggest clientele are, are folks that are low-income and we provide direct service to them. And new also, we are in our second year of providing choices counseling, which was added on, I think, my first year that I was here. And then our, our typical services a lot that are by statute, such as helping with evictions and being the fair housing officer and the Veterans Affairs Officer. Kim, you worked for me the first time. Okay. Areas of focus for the upcoming year. Some of our services and programs that we've expanded and added on this year, we offered a new program in conjunction with our police department. It was a rape defense class that we offered and that was, went very well. We got a lot of very positive feedback and gratitude from the participants for having been able to offer that. And now that we own the equipment, we're going to have a conversation with the police department on hopefully being able to provide that at least once a year. And I already spoke about additional sensory-friendly activities that we're going to be adding on, the veterans program, which you will be able to hear about soon. You're also going to be hearing about our initiative to become a recovery-friendly community. That will be this coming up Monday. And that is part of our recently received state mini grant focusing on opioid use disorder and reduction of that in our community. Our partners on that, we're really excited. We're partnering with A Promise to Jordan and with Farmington Valley Health District. We also have a, a new committee that you're going to be hearing about soon. Social Services has been an integral part in the up-and-coming and evolving Spirit Committee, which was a direct result of the work that we did last year with our depart, with the Department of Justice, taking a look at equity and equality concerns and issues in the community. And you'll hear more about that at their presentation in April. So I guess I can say that we've been busy. And we're going to continue to do that. Good work. Some of our budget highlights, we have our increase in our full-time salaries due to general wage increases and negotiated contractual step increases. We also are reflecting our eight-thousand-dollar town match to, for the Youth Service Bureau funding. It's going to be noted in the operating transfers. So that's why you, you'll see a little change in the dollar amounts there. The increase that you see here for the senior center part-time line, it really did not increase by that amount, but we, I know Maria's been working on and Amy in really showing you what our expenses are and where the funding is coming from. A bulk of our funding for the senior lunch program for Wednesdays is from our Belden Trust, so we're showing you the actual cost of running that lunch program. And we're very grateful to our trustees for continuing to support that lunch program. And we had a small impact from the minimum wage increase, so you'll see that small increase over the years. The, there was a decrease in the senior center in our contracted services line item. And I think that Maria had kind of walked you through how some of those changes were going to be happening and reallocating some of the funds over to Culture Parks and Recreation. And we're going to be working with Amy moving forward on how to really better look at our own special revenue account for the senior center and how we're taking in our funds and paying our vendors. So more information on that to come. There was a small decrease, as I said, in our senior transportation in our Dialeride. It had been several years since we had gone out to bid for our Dialeride contract and we felt that it was appropriate to do that. So we did go through that process last, last spring and we are still with our current vendor. He came in with the best product and service for us and we're very happy with him. That's Martel Transportation. We are also reflecting in the budget, the funding that we receive in grant revenue from the state and our enhanced Dialeride program revenue. Trends and challenges, we just continue to try to do a really good job to help people as they continue to face challenges around lack of work or work that is not enough to sustain their family. We are going to, this year, you'll see in an upcoming slide, we're going to be applying for a grant to replace our oldest Dialeride vehicle. And we're continuing to collaborate with our other town departments to provide our programs and services. And this is the slide regarding the Dialeride ban. Our projected cost with the, the current vendor is about sixty-three thousand dollars to replace our vehicle. There is a grant that's available through Greater Hartford Transit and that grant is an eighty-twenty split with eighty percent of the grant, eighty percent of the funding for the vehicle coming from the grant and twenty percent coming from us. We don't anticipate that the general fund will have to support this project. We do have enough money in our Dialeride Pass Fund that will cover that twenty percent. And then next year, you'll also see a request for, to replace our second vehicle. We've been a little off track with replacing our vehicles. They haven't been replaced in a while and we'd like to get back onto a routine cycle of making sure that our vehicles are current. That was the end for me, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight, I've made a really incomplete list here of the things that you support, Community for Care, JRB, Spirit Council, the Age Friendly Community Initiative, the Hidden Heroes City Initiative, the Recovery Friendly Community, and I'm sure that's like a quarter of it. What, what help do you need from this group?
You know, I think that right now, it's just my main goal to keep you updated on how things are progressing. And Maria and I have been having some conversations about those committees and how we're interfacing and how to move forward with them. We, as you know, in the previous budget season, had been awarded the funds to hire a new social worker. We had done that and unfortunately, our first staff person did resign. So we have just hired another social worker. She's also a licensed clinical social worker, so there are two of us on staff now. She just came on board in January. So right now, we're going through the process of training her and I think I would have a better answer for what we need after that process. We've been really careful about spreading out the liaison duties because we do have so many boards and commissions that we support. So between Kathy Marshall, our senior center coordinator, myself and our new social worker, we're going to be looking at who can, who can take on those responsibilities. And I'm also, wanted to thank you again for supporting my clinical license. I just wanted to share with you that I had been able to move through the process a lot quicker than we had hoped or anticipated. And that did save the town money. I was able to utilize funds that were left over last year to speed up the clinical process and take my exam much sooner than we anticipated. So I'm licensed, I'm also registered now as a national healthcare provider, so it's kind of cool for us.
Congratulations. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
You guys have, do you, I know you coordinate with, with the schools, social work, the very, various professionals. But do you guys have a, I was curious, do you guys have like a standing, just sort of team meeting where you get together and review, review stuff and integrate with them? Or is it as, is it based upon cases?
I think our work is so different that I don't see the need to have a regular meeting.
Which is good. And I like, as a manager, I like that.
Yes.
That's a good manager.
Thank you. We do have regular meetings with our Youth Service Bureau. We meet four times through the school year and that's our regular contact meeting with the psychologists, the social workers and other members of the staff. Last week, we just did our big project with the school where we supported their day-long effort of disconnect to connect, where they had all of the students and staff not use electronics for a day. And then I communicate regularly with the social workers and with the school nurses about referrals for our family therapy program.
Any other questions? Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think we can squeeze the librarian before lunch.
You really need the microphone more directed at me.
He's loud enough.
And Tom. Tom Tversky, you're on, you're on deck. I think we'll try to get to you before lunch as well, since your members are here.
Well, it is still good morning, right?
Yes.
All right. So I'm here this morning to present the library budget. I don't know if you're aware, but Pew Research actually did a study recently and libraries topped the list of common cultural activities in 2019 with people visiting ten-point-five times over the course of the year, followed by the movies at five-point-three times. But here in Simsbury, the per capita visits to our library were fourteen-point-eight per capita last year. The state average is only about five-point-three. I can also let you know that over fifty percent of the population in town does have a library card. The state average is about forty percent, so. Okay, moving into the budget. Our total proposed operating budget is one million, six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars, an increase of fifty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars or three-point-three-seven percent. Six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars is for the administration, an increase of three-point-sixteen percent. For adult services, we have an increase of five-hundred-and-forty-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars or one-point-nine-four percent. Children's services, an increase of three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars or three-point-four-five percent. And then building and grounds, one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars or nine-point-nine-eight percent. And you'll see later on in the slides, the building and grounds trends that have increased that portion of the budget. We have twenty-three-point-two-three budgeted full-time equivalents. The majority of them are in the administration section, followed by adults, followed by children's services and then adult services. And basically, that's because adult services primarily part-time staff. I can tell you that the library benefited about a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars last year by using volunteer service hours. They provided over three-thousand-seven-hundred hours last year, which is a tremendous support to the staff. What we haven't done in the past, we haven't highlighted for you the support that the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library actually provides the library every year. This about seventy-thousand dollars really is the annual support, almost annually, that we receive from the Friends of the Library. So it's over and above what the town provides. And certainly, we couldn't do what we do without this support, but the key here is that it's not guaranteed support. It's not necessarily sustainable support. But I did want to point out to you that this is about how much we do see. And of course, they fund other special projects as well. This year, they'll be funding the Story Walk that we hope to have a ribbon cutting for in May.
Could you, real quick?
Sure.
Go back to that slide. So if, if we lost their support, I mean, it should have been very, very black and white in this sense, we talked about the programs or is it too simplistic to say programs are event? simplistic to say programs are events that are held and run and where people come to experience at the library, right?
You would see a tremendous decrease in programming at all levels, yes.
And that is, and then, what would be an idea, I know you're going to probably give us your percentage at some point, and when you're, your fantastic stats about spending and materials, that, the materi, what is that material there? Is it simplistically a book, potentially?
No, they, they provide funds for DVDs, they provide funds for streaming material, for digital content, for large print material, for teen services material.
So part of that is the product that's on the shelves.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, it's not, materials related to the programs that are being added there?
No, it's material that circulates.
Okay.
Yes.
That's important for people, I think, to know that part as well. All right, thank you.
Sure. So our services and programs, and this is a very high level of what we do, we educate and enrich the community by providing free and equal access to information. And I think we, we hit on that free and equal access point when we went fine-free with our pilot last July, and we'll talk more about that later. And we serve as the community's multi-generational gathering place. I think we are one of the places in town, in addition to Parks and Recreation, where there's something for everyone from birth until, until people are seniors. And we offer hands-on learning and of course, volunteer opportunities that I already touched on. We're also a community partner. We partner with almost all of the other town departments, as well as the schools and local businesses and organizations, and of course, other area libraries, so that we can leverage what we have. And then, of course, we actively support economic development through the Business Resource Center, and as you know, we've just hired a new Business Resource Center coordinator who has really hit the ground running, and he's got great ideas and a lot of energy. Through our Innovators Workshop, we provide equipment and collaborative workspace and learning opportunities for all kinds of different people and all ages of people. And over the course of the opening of the Makerspace in 2014, usage has increased over We provide a safe place for teens to engage in quiet study, to socialize, and of course, opportunities to gain vital leadership opportunities through our Teen Advisory Board. And then through our, through our Teen Job Center, that we won the Connecticut Library Association Excellence in Public Library Service Award, we provide them the workforce skills that they need to be successful. Okay, as you know, we completed our renovation of the lower level this year and added an 80-seat program space, and that was funded in part by a grant from the state of Connecticut. It was a desperately needed space, the, through our strategic planning process, we, and we also knew that we were running out of space for all of the organizations and for town government to use within the library, as well as library programming. We know that last year, we had 49 outside programs at the library a week, in addition to the 30 library programs that we were doing every week. So that's a lot of demand on, on a space that's finite. We did become a certified passport acceptance agency. I can tell you that the start of that rollout has gone very slowly. We're not allowed to offer renewals of passports, which is part of the issue, and I think someone else who presented earlier said this is a very well-traveled community. Many people already have passports, but we have seen in the last month that it is picking up, so.
Will, will that eventual, will you eventually be able to do renewals, or is that just not going to happen?
It's a federal statute, so probably not.
Isn't there more exposure in the new than the renewal? Isn't it more hazardous to do new passports than renewal?
I don't know what to tell you, it's a federal statute. But it is something that we will maintain, and staff will need to be trained annually to upkeep this, this process. I do think for families, it's a, it's a very valuable place that you go to the library where it's comfortable and you can, instead of standing at the post office at the counter.
I know, I just want to renew my passport at the library.
Sorry. If you renew early enough, you can do it online.
When we went, you guys didn't have the applications, and then you went like, where the applications started, nobody knew where they were.
That's an unfortunate thing to hear right now.
But I think it's because they were out of them. It's a good, I think it's because they were out of them, it's a good thing.
Okay. All right, and then, of course, we initiated our fine-free pilot, too. And you'll see the impact that that has had in a further slide. Areas of focus for next year. For the past couple of years, we've been focusing a lot of, on outreach and meeting people where they are. It's time to bring it back into the building and increase engagement within the facility, so we're going to increase our library cardholders by 2%, increase program attendance by 2%, and increase material circulation by 1.5%. And of course, we're going to continue to invest in the development of the library staff. If you look at our budget overall, the majority of it is personnel because we are people-based service over 64 hours across, across a week. So we're going to continue to cross-train people, so we're more flexible and more dynamic. We're going to offer at least one staff development program. Thanks to the town manager, we were able to offer for the very first time a staff development opportunity for our full-time staff, and I've already seen the benefits to that, just in building the team dynamically, better understand each other. And thanks to the chief and the police department, we were able to offer a security training for our staff as well. And then Rachel Gravel, who's head of Borrowing and Technical Services, she's working on a staff Intranet for us, so that people will have one-stop shopping at their desktops or their laptops to find the critical information they need to work. Another area of focus is supporting the local economy through our library programs, materials and services, and the Business Resource Center. You already know that we applied for a PEGPISA grant to increase the equipment and expand the equipment that we have in Innovators Workshop, and hopefully, we'll hear about that soon. We are going to work with the Business Resource Center coordinator to support economic development and their work plan by creating a coworking space in the Business Resource Center. Now, that's exactly how it was designed when it started 20 years ago, but it needs a refresh because coworking is much different now than it was 20 years ago. We've already had, started implementing a short-term plan to do that. We've moved power grommets to the top of the tables rather than having people crawl under the table, life transforming. And we're looking to add additional seating, additional coworking areas, and the Business Resource Center coordinator is actually giving up his office to accommodate another meeting area.
Cool.
And the Business Resource Center coordinator, he's already been working with the Economic Development Commission and Melissa to support them. So the budget highlights, $29,519 increase in full-time salaries due to general wage increases and step increases. You'll see that the library workforce, when I first arrived six years ago, was very seasoned, and what we've seen in the past six years is the turnover of the seasoned employees, and we're bringing on new staff, so you're going to see an increase in step increases for a while. And then, of course, the increase in minimum wage is impacting the library because we have many, many people that are working minimum wage, many, many, a handful, but it's $6,300, which is not an insignificant impact on the budget. And then we have an extended duration of warm weather, so that increases our electricity because of the air conditioning.
Help me out with that, that's the only building in town that experienced that.
This building as well.
There's no 16% increase in electricity budgets, you know, in any of the other budgets.
We're also open more often than Town Hall is.
16% is gigantic, though. That's, are we sure that's what's going on?
It was really hot last summer, wasn't it? It was, it was warm for a long time. It was warm way into the fall.
I understand that. We've had years where it's been warmer to the fall before. I'm confused, that's a massive change.
In some of our buildings, yeah, the warm season was like exceptionally long this year, and some of our buildings don't have central air systems, and some of them have just a handful of window units, so in terms of, in shorter times that they're open, so the two buildings that were really impacted from electric superfective, were, this building in particular, and the library, it's sort of a combination of those factors, it's again, central air, warm, warm season, we tend to be open longer than most of our buildings.
I'd like to dive more into that, that's a, that's a massive increase.
It's something we can certainly look at.
Yeah.
New HVAC, new central air. You guys have been doing upgrades, so I'm wondering if that.
We actually do not have one central air unit, we have multiple air units, which could also be why it's not as cost-effective.
If they're newer, that would drive the cost down.
They've just been changing over, so I'm saying, I'm wondering if they weren't as effective.
But then, this budget should be down, not up. If they're more effective going forward, then the cost should be lower.
The last sent, the last air unit that went in was 2012.
Yeah.
And of course, the, the renovated space downstairs has a new HVAC unit.
Yeah, I just.
It's something we can certainly look into.
Because that, that really is an outlier, especially with the technology we have and everything else to, to cut that back.
And of course, you know, we have a new generator at the library, which is a wonderful thing to have, should the power go out for an extended period, because we know that people will flock to charge their electronic devices, blow-dry their hair, check up on all their Wi-Fi, but that does come with increased cost to the budget. So we have $1,200 for the annual testing of the oil tank, and then we also need additional de-icing for our walkways and parking lot. And then we need $500 to provide the oil for the generator.
So for, you just, just because you brought up construction, remind me, what was sort of been, sort of an ongoing out front to the right corner externally?
The HVAC system.
That was, but there was like repeated excavation and then back in.
The generator went in, and also the HVAC system for the new tariffill room is there.
Is that, but it was seemingly that was recent, though, too, like there were some, well past, well past the tariffill room being.
Yes, there was a problem with the oil tank, so they were excavating the front lawn again, very recently, yes.
Thank you, that's what it was.
That's been remedied.
Well past the completion of that project.
Oh, yes.
And that's all done now?
Yeah, it should be, yes, it's been corrected, yes. So I wanted to demonstrate for you, illustrate today, how the fine-free pilot has impacted our fine revenue. You'll see in fiscal year 18, we were operating just as we had been all along, and we brought in about $27,000 in fines, and we instituted automatic renewal in 2019, which is something that the library consortium actually instituted as well. And it, it brought fine revenue down because people's material was automatically renewed, and I can tell you anecdotally, especially parents, love that service, because if you have 50,000 children's books and it's very hard to keep track of them, they automatically get renewed, you automatically buy yourself some extra time. And then if you look at the fine-free pilot, now that we're almost all the way through this year, you can see it didn't really impact the revenue from fines as much as we may have thought. And the reason for that is we have self-check machines, and so people that visit Simsbury Library and need to check material out may have fines from other libraries, and they pay those fines at the self-check machine, so we bring in that revenue.
Oh, that's strange.
All right, why don't we get there, Evan?
So.
Do we have to remit it to the library?
We do not.
Is that somewhat because of the fact we have, we do have a, we do have a pool, we have a shared pool of materials, right? Is that, is that somewhat behind that methodology or thinking?
Not necessarily, no. I think what we, what we find here in Simsbury, we have such a robust, vibrant library that people from surrounding towns use us more frequently than they might, are people going somewhere else, so that, that's why you see that.
As I know, we can like electronically, you can pull.
Yes, you can pull material through.
A copy of it from somebody else, so I just wonder if that's behind the methodology of sharing the fines as well, because.
No, because if they pull material from another library and pick it up here in Simsbury and check it out here, it will not accrue a fine. So it's material they've checked out through other libraries, but then they visit Simsbury to check something out, and they have a fine.
We should have a special day where we encourage Avon residents to come to our library.
We'll call it Avon Day.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we're scheduled to do a full presentation on the fine-free pilot in May to the Board of Selectmen. All right, trends and challenges. Obviously, we're going to continue to provide the services that we do provide in the most cost-effective, efficient manner as possible. Circulation of materials and community engagement, of course, at a public service desk is really the core of library service still. And then, of course, we continually evaluate what we're doing to make sure that it's cost-effective and relevant, in fact. So as I've told you, we opened the new tariffill room, you know that. It alleviated some of the demand for our spaces, but we still continually shuffle groups around to make sure that we can accommodate people. So we are continually looking at different ways that we can use our space, and increasing the Business Resource Center's flexibility to be a coworking space will help with some of that. The Business Resource Center coordinator giving up his office to become another conference room, also part of that. And just as the other departments, we continue to monitor state funding to see how it might impact the library budget. Right now, the borrow-it funds are in the budget, so we're not concerned about it for this year, but going down the road, we don't know if that $19,000 will be coming directly to us in perpetuity or not, so it is something that we continue to track. And I talked about this last year as well, but the state library restructured its deliberate program, and what it has caused is that the library consortium now has to do a hybrid delivery service, so we have supplemental delivery from our library consortium on top of the state library delivery service. That's not adequate to support Simsbury's needs because we're a high-volume library. Currently, the library consortium is paying reserve funds to support that transit bill. Eventually, that's not sustainable, and the cost will come back to the library, so that is something that we continue to monitor. Okay, on to my service improvement. And I brought props. So while library services have changed greatly in the last 10 to 20 years, circulation and the borrowing of materials is still a core service, and the town has invested so heavily in the infrastructure in the library, and that's great and it's wonderful, but if you continue to invest in the infrastructure of the library and you don't invest in the collection, eventually, you're going to wind up with a shell. The other thing that's changed over the course of these past 10 years, when you can see the materials budget has dipped and never really recovered. In 2008, when we were up at about $175,000, $180,000, there was not the demand or the need necessarily for the same digital content that you need today, so while in the past we could have purchased one copy of the book, we now need to purchase an audio copy of the book, we need to purchase an ebook. And then, of course, keeping in mind that there are some people who are vision impaired, we have a large print copy. Should this book become a movie, then we'll need to purchase the DVD, so you're not just purchasing one title, one copy, one volume, you're purchasing multiples.
Is this inclusive of the gift from the Friends?
It is not.
It is not, so what does that trend look like when you overlay that?
It's not very, it's not very different.
So that, it's been consistent, the Friends have been given 40K even back in the higher funding times?
I think the material contribution's only about 19.
I'm sorry, I thought, I, okay, let me see.
Yeah, 19 or 20.
Yeah, it's about 19 or 20, and that has been consistent, but again, the key thing that I want to remind everyone about, the Friends' income, it's not guaranteed. Anything could happen. A lot of the Friends' income is contingent upon membership, and we know across all kinds of organizations that membership is dropping. Another thing that their income is built on is the income from the book sale, and they've already sort of been planning for, you know, people buying ebooks rather than physical books, the drop-off of donations for the book sale, so again, that's not guaranteed income. So while you're pointing to that, the fact that they support the material budget, it's not something that we can necessarily count on.
No, I was just, I was worried that it was, the drop was actually worse and that they had increased there to, to slow it down.
No.
Can you talk about the grant that the library just applied for?
The PEGPISA grant?
I'm not sure, and I thought it was for some materials and audiobooks.
It was, that portion of the PEGPISA grant was for things in the children's department. They're actually self-contained read-along books. When, when, when I was young, you had a, a record on your record player, and it would ding when you needed to turn the page. Now it's all complete in one unit, and that's, it was to fund an opening collection of that material. That was part of it, yes. But again, grant funding is not something that you can rely on to have to support your material budget.
Neither is taxpayer dollars is a problem.
Neither is great claims years.
So then, I wanted to show you where we fall expenditure per capita wise for materials. You'll see that Avon is there with $9.37, and we are down at the end with $6.41, and note that does not contain the Friends' support for the materials because it's not guaranteed income. So what we've requested is an additional $20,000, which will bring the per capita, restoring that to the 2008 levels, will bring the per capita spending to $7.38. So we'll be right there between Glastonbury and West Hartford, should you, should you grant that request.
And just because, that's not in these budget pages?
Correctly, so there were, if you'll recall from my presentation a few weeks ago, there were four service improvements that I felt really rose to the top in terms of an organizational priority, and we've been, that the board wants to add to the budget. I felt that that was a policy decision, so later in the afternoon, we do have a summary of these four flagged potential service improvements or restorations for discussion to see if you would want to add them to the budget. I did, for the purposes of today, characterize the library's material request as a restoration, only because, again, their funding is still, you know, well below where it previously had been, but it's sort of in that same category of improvement or restoration, so we'll be talking about it more this afternoon.
I'd want to see that, though, with all-in costs, because you're just spiking out one line at them, so what was the funding when it was changed for the entire library versus what it is now?
So.
You're saying it's a cut, but was, what's the funding for the library in its entirety back then versus it is now?
Oh, I'm sorry, we, yeah, we were just focused on the materials budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's difficult, Sean's point as well.
Need a full comparison if you're going to do that. Is it, we fund more positions, have we, have we gone a different direction to, it's.
We've added different programming, which is all, none of it's a defense, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's just a more global understanding of the request and how it fits in.
Yes.
Because, so when you, when you, I don't know, at least we, we'll be here later on to add the more narrative to that, that point of material cost. But is it something as simplistic as books on shelves in their various forms? Or are there other materials that would be in there, I mean, as part of the request to go up?
Primarily, it's circulating materials like books, like DVDs, like audiobooks, like books on CD, digital content. Databases are also in there.
Okay, so I shouldn't think about any of the, any of the learning games that are there? Or office supplies, materials, well, simply-
No, not office supplies for sure. Perhaps some of the games that we do circulate now. The, the material, the library of things actually was purchased with Friends' funds. And to speak to your, to your question and comment, Sean, I think since 2008, in 2012, the library budget was actually cut and hours were cut.
Yeah, but then we put them back.
You did put them back, yes. We have not added any significant staff in that time. When we hired our teen services librarian, it was through money that we had through attrition. So it's not like we added any additional staff positions. Also during this tenure, the secretary position was cut to part-time. That's since been reinstated, but it's still not at full-time. So I wouldn't say that the library budget is any, any significantly different due to programming or changes in service.
No, but, I mean, it is up on annual compression, I mean, we, we have rising costs every year.
That's right. Mary Ann just reminded me that the, the expanded library in the structure that it's in, now the 43,000 square feet, opened in 2009.
Look, I'm not against it, I just, if we're going to make the argument to the Board of Finance, we need to do apples and apples because I guarantee my friend Lisa's going to ask me that question.
Yep. Any other questions?
Oh, in general, I haven't, I didn't know if you were done or on that. I just, on the, on the revenue, so we get money when people rent out the, the program space?
We get money when for-profit people rent out the program spaces, not-for-profits are not charged.
So because, just the question came up recently, so the NAACP came, they use the tariffill room. Then we have like Community for Care, they use the, the room. And then you have the internal things. The question came up is, who advertises those? Like, and this may not be related, but who is responsible for getting the word out since it's held at the library? Do you guys take ownership of that, or should the agency that's using it?
We don't have the staff capacity to take ownership of outside groups using the library. If it's a, if it's a program that we're partnering with an organization, then we would promote that for sure.
Okay, because it just came up and I didn't know the answer and someone-
We get asked that very frequently, unfortunately, we do not have the staff capacity to do that.
Okay, but it's good to know in advance, then they can go do their own thing or get some help.
We do promote the Friends program because it's, it's a partnership.
Yeah, okay.
Can you just go back to the chart just for a second on the reference material?
Oh my goodness, what did I do?
I just want to be, because I'm going to forget later.
I got it.
We're going to talk about this at the end of the day.
This or-
Uh, that one, so we're at, yeah, 164, 200 and we want to go to 184, 200? 185?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood. 185, okay.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Sorry, I will totally forget in three hours.
I'd be happy to remind you.
Well, I didn't want to, you don't need to stay. I was trying to save you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also want to thank the members of the library board and the Friends who are here.
Which I should have done, I'm very sorry.
It's just such a partnership and, and, it's a gem in our town. It wouldn't exist without that partnership, so thank you.
Tom, go quick.
Let's do Tom.
This one's going to be easy, no, you can't have it. This one's easy, we're going flat. Just kidding, just kidding Dave, jeez. Uh, we're going to need some help with the sprinklers. Friends is the next board.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I think everybody knows me because I'm here every week.
Tom.
We'll forego that. I want to thank Jerry Wetchen and Dave Bush from the Recreation Commission for coming and Mike Wallace, my Simsbury Farms Golf Superintendent, and Orlando Caziano, our Parks Superintendent, are in attendance as well.
Yes, coming in.
So, here we go, Culture Parks and Recreation Budget. This year, the total operating expense budget is $3,167,588. The two big, and it's broken down by division there. The two largest budget drivers within that $3 million are the minimum wage increase for our lifeguards, our camp counselors, our parks maintenance staff, and tree maintenance. As you know, it's becoming, it's becoming almost epidemic in this part of the state. So those are the two biggest drivers, roughly over $30,000 for minimum wage and $30,000 in tree maintenance.
So those are trees different than what Tom Roy's crew does?
It's different. These are parks and open space trees, trail trees.
Okay, and those aren't included in the, in the extra spend that we had for the Emerald Ash Borer?
Right, that was roadway.
That was all roadway.
Why didn't we include those?
That's a good question.
That, that is a, well, that is a great question. At a staff level, we have talked about, unfortunately, both Tom and myself, we weren't here when the ash borer study was completed.
Yeah, but we funded it last year.
The year before.
Right, so that, that was the study that was done on the ash borer trees in our roadways.
I understand when the study was on, but the funding was last year and the year before. So we paid for it while everybody was here.
Current year, right, right. So there was a study to do, there was a study that identified all the ash bores that needed to be removed along the roadway. And that's what that CNR project has been for, which was to remove them from the roadway. Why the park and open space trees weren't included in that study, we can't really speak to. But it is something we're now trying to catch up on, is trying to take care of the dead and diseased trees in our, in our parks and open space.
There hasn't, I, from my experience here and you would, Sean, you've been around a long time, there hasn't been an increase to the parks maintenance budget to cover tree maintenance in many, many, many years. And as we've brought these new parks online and brought these trails online, the trees have aged. They've become more active, they're more heavily used, there, there's more of a, an expectation if, you know, somebody's calling when, when things are looking like they need to come down or there's a danger. Also, our residents in town are more aware of, who, who about open space are more aware of trees coming down on their property? So we're, we're constantly going on calls, having to look at trees, many of which we're, we're having to take down or maintain in some way.
No, and I get that. I guess my frustration is that we pitched to the Board of Finance rather forcefully and we got pushed back on this topic. And now we got to go to them again a third time for even more money. And that's, that's not going to go over well.
Understood.
And it's not your fault, but it's, this is where we need to be looking at this stuff in totality. So let's make sure that we've got it all in this time, because this is not going to be well-received from the board there.
And it's not going to stop.
No.
And that, and that's it, I mean, we asked, you know, we're asking for an increase of $30,000. That's probably about half of what we really need to do the job and then start, start doing preventive maintenance. This is, this is just reactive maintenance.
Right, right.
Yeah, so again, we need to talk about this. And then if we put it in the budget, it never comes out. So do we need to do this in a CNR on-time item so that people understand that this is extraordinary to get us caught up?
So the particular money that we're looking for in the operating budget for Park and Rec, I would not necessarily characterize as the extraordinary. As Tom said, a lot of it is reactive now. But in terms of looking ahead and just in terms of having adequate funds for the parks and open space parcels for tree maintenance, that was why we proposed it as an operating expense, because we don't really see an end to having to do tree maintenance within our parks and open space versus the project along the roadways is a little different. But again, I think we're just going to have that continual tree maintenance and the parks and open space.
I got to push there though. If these are the Emerald Ash Bowers, they're all going to die.
Oh, this is an exclusive dashboard.
It's not just that, I mean, we have a lot of, a lot of older oaks and maples, everything. Felden Forest is not, is not all ash trees.
You're not supposed to be cutting anything in there. It's an old growth forest.
But we have, but we have a hanger over a trail.
We have to.
We have, we're obligated, you know, if we're telling people to go hike there, we are obligated to make sure that trail is safe.
So you're telling me there's-
Same thing along the bike trail.
There's 30 grand in an increase in, in hangers on a year-over-year basis?
We have-
Sean, let me answer that. It's not just hangers, it's just preventive maintenance. You know, the 2011 storm did major damage to all of our parks and open space areas.
Yeah.
So we're constantly, we're still recovering from that 2011 storm. So we're doing tree, tree takedowns due to age, which is one of the biggest factors.
Okay.
Could that be, so if you looked on just tree, so if a tree came across the path, the Emmett path, would that fall in, so maybe like, I don't know, you can help understand. So if a tree comes down during a storm across the, the path and you send out some, one of your, your teams gets deferred from cutting a green that morning to go clean up that tree and remove it, is that just sort of all part and parcel of the labor that's spent for that day, just a daily job? Or do you guys actually look at it like we've got, we've got a price for this and, and pay for it out of a different fund? Can you help me understand that?
It's depending on the tree. Now, there's this contractual work where we can get into in-between property lines that we need a chipper, a claim, a professional climber to go up there and take down these leaves. Obviously, a lot more expensive. Anything that's down, we clean up ourselves. But this is more for contractual work that being done by contractors.
We have a lot of tree, in the Meadow Farms neighborhood with the open space trails that intersect between the neighborhood, that neighborhood is now close to 40, 50 years old. There's a lot of trees that are in danger of coming down on, on, the open space trees on homeowners' property or onto those trails. There, there's thousands of dollars of the tree work just in that neighborhood alone that we need to address.
We really have, over at Meadow Farms, have about $10,000 worth of work that has to get done due to tree damage, age, and so on.
Look, I'm not, but you guys are the experts on it. I guess my point is, is instead, and I don't want to do this every year where we have a debate about trees and then we got to go with hat in hand to the Board of Finance. If there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in tree work, let's talk about it, let's get it down on a piece of paper, let's fund it. Because again, when this thing, when this stuff comes out of left field a little bit, it makes it harder to deal with on the budgetary side. So let's get these numbers to the right place so that we can take care of all the damage and we can understand what's truly the operating budget impact, the maintenance, the, the ongoing stuff versus we've got to go back and fix 10 years of, we haven't been paying attention. And again, not a knock on anybody, but we haven't been funding that. So those, to me, are two different things. And let's, let's, let's just get those numbers down there so we can arm you guys with the right amount of funds and get those trails cleaned up.
And the hope is, Sean, is to get to that point where we can do preventive maintenance.
Yes.
And prevent these numbers from being continued to-
Yeah, so let's, let's talk about what, what that number is so that we all do it with eyes wide open. Because again, what I know our, my friends in the Board of Finance don't like is that we tell them it's a number one year and that we didn't tell them about the next two years that are coming. And they get pretty frustrated with us and rightfully so. So let's just make sure that we understand the full impact. Because we broke the Emerald Ash Borer issue up into multiple years because we didn't want to, we didn't want to deal with it all at once. So again, that's fine that this is different, but let's, let's try to handle it the same way. Which, if, if there's really $300,000 worth of work here, let's put that down and figure out in our list of priorities, are we going to spend that 300 now, are we going to spend it over three years or five years or whatever we're going to do? And to Tom, hopefully that gives you better certainty so you're not having to come in here and fight for this every year in your operating budget. So, thanks, guys. Sorry for going down that rabbit hole, but trees are expensive.
The, the Culture Parks and Recreation Department, between the parks, golf and recreation side, we're at 18 full-time employees right now. We were at 19 last year. We had the position, the recreation supervisor, one of the two recreation supervisor positions reduced in last year's budget. On the golf, just a note here, on the golf full-time FTEs, we have four full-time employees. We have a superintendent, assistant superintendent, a mechanic and a maintainer. We have four part-time seasonal, part-time employees during the golf season. That adds up to the other two full-time employees, that's the note there. We are currently maintaining 535 acres of park and 2,500 acres of open space and certainly many money, many miles of trails. And we will be taking on the, the new Hopbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge Park coming on this spring. Certainly, there's going to be a higher level of maintenance there. There's a lot of hand mowing going, that's going to be needed at that park. We are working in conjunction with the Flower Bridge Committee to use their volunteer efforts to help us with the flower, the flower beds there. And we're very grateful for their efforts in that department. So areas of focus this year, we're hoping to increase continually, this is every year, increase participation and awareness of our department programs and events. We're hoping to get, you know, continue to use the social marketing tools that we have available to us. We're trying to work with our, with our staff and other talent departments to integrate our events and our activities so we're all share, we're kind of all sharing the load. I know the library, social services and the Recreation Department have been very good about coordinating events together. And I know we'll be continuing to do so through this year. As the master plan, you're going to get your master plan presentation at the end of April. We're going to be taking those recommendations and working, and begin working through those over the next 10 years. So you'll see some of, some of the initial ideas that are going to be presented, we do have in this budget, but we'll be, we'll be concentrating on those as we move forward. We're going to be adding adult, more adult and more preschool programs to what we already offer and hopefully getting into some more after-school programs. And one of the things that we're really hoping to do is, is really trying to create an awareness about the parks and trails and open space that we do have in town. One of the, one of the ideas I have is, it's called a gnome, gnome your parks program. So I think we're going to purchase some gnomes and, and have, you know, we'll write, kind of do this Facebook type of thing where people will go to the park, find a gnome and hashtag Simsbury Rec and what park it is. And then, you know, enough people, enough people at one park do it, we'll, we'll draw a gift certificate or something. Trying to, trying to get really people to go and look for these things. Kind of tagging that off, something I've seen another community do, but I think it'll work here. And again, we're going to be concentrating on our fence, on our trail fencing and the trees in our trails and parks, as we mentioned before. There's our minimum wage increase this year. Again, that's across all of our, all of our divisions in the Recreation Department. Our $30,000 increase request for the tree maintenance. And again, it's climate, age and tree disease are all contributing to those, to those things while we're asking for that request.
Yeah, Tom, I'll just quickly jump in here, sorry, since we're a little, little out of order with our slides and discussion. But I think I had mentioned in the presentation, just in comparison right now for our operating budget, we only had $10,000 budgeted a year to take care of all of our open space and parks for trees. And comparatively, we had $55,000 budgeted on an annual basis for tree work in our roadways. And when we, as Tom mentioned, we've been starting to get the results of the parks and, and open space master plan. And that was one of the areas that they've identified as, you know, us needing to make more of an investment in terms of the maintenance aspect of the parks and the open space. So a lot of that contributed to us identifying, identifying this need.
Yeah, it is, I mean, as we've talked about and we're going to talk about later in capital, I mean, this town loves to buy open space, which is a good thing. But the taxpayers don't like to find, fund the maintenance of it, so we need to do a better job of that.
Exactly.
Because we're asking, you know, and they don't understand is there's an operating budget. You know, long since Ethel Walker Bond issue passes, we still got to pay for that way.
Our, I mean, our guys aren't just, I mean, they're not just mowing and-
No, I know.
Mining fields, we're, we're doing all ki- all kinds of things.
Guys do everything, that's crazy.
And a couple, I was going to share an interesting story. We had a report last year from a cross-country skier about a potential stalker homeless person setting up shop in Ethel Walker Woods. As it turned out, we did, Orlando and I went out there, what's that? We went out there, you know, we, we were able to get a general idea where, what, what we were looking for. And about 50 to 100 yards off the trail, deep in the woods, someone had built a tree fort about 15 feet high and roughly about the size of a small living room, using windows and old doors. And it was four sides, it had a roof, floor, everything. And it looked like somebody had been living there. It turns out, we think it's some high school kids who had taken up shop out there and using it as a hangout spot. But it, it comes springtime, it took roughly three to four people, three days to dismantle this, this tree fort and get it out of the, you know, walk the equipment, walk the debris out of the woods.
I'm not that handy.
It took some ti- it took some time to get it up, it took some time to take it down. We, we, we're constant, I mean, I think we're, our customer service is great, especially on the parks. And we're reacting to calls every day about this or that, or someone sees something in a park. And I think everybody, the satisfaction level's coming back from the survey, we're fantastic. People really see that, you know, we're out there making an effort, we're doing our best to keep these spaces clean and, and safe for everyone. But it's not just the, the lining of the fields or mowing where they're most commonly seen. It's soup to nuts out there.
I get it, you guys are working hard.
So, there is an increase this year for sewer and water charges. We've been underfunded in that account as, as the pool meters, pool meter has come online at Memorial Park. That's raised our, that's raised our rates. The sewer treatment plan has been giving us a break on the sewer charges the last couple of years. And unfortunately, I can't guarantee that's going to be able to happen again this year. And the cost of, the cost of water has increased.
So that means that we haven't been charged right for the water in the past and then we got to ante up to it?
I, I think that's probably the case. From what I've seen, we've got, we've seen our, now we've got, after a year of being here, we've got a better handle on, on what that account looks like. And this is a more realistic, the 10,000 increase is a more realistic expectation of that expense.
And is that tied to the, again, the age of, and challenges we already have at Memorial Pool?
A, a large part of that is, yes.
That's part of that.
That would be fair to say.
Another reason why a splash pad might be a bad idea.
A good idea?
A good idea.
Bad idea, water charges? It all goes down the drain once it goes up in air.
There are recycling options with splash pads?
Evaporation too.
Yeah, there's recycling options.
So between the insurance increase and that, okay.
On the, but to your point about the insurance before, a splash pad is less insurance than a pool, so.
Yeah?
Less staff.
Right up until the first kid gets hurt.
He's selling this.
All right, continuing with- All right. Continuing with our budget highlights here. This budget maintains the current level of services, recognizing that we're, that there's still work to be done on the special revenue fund, which the, the Board of Selectmen has, has signed on to the work group that they'll be working through this spring and summer on that project. And the town manager is recommending a twenty-five thousand dollar increase from the, to the general fund contribution to this, from the general fund to the special revenue fund this year. And then the five thousand dollar reallocation that was mentioned before from the senior center budget to fund our community events going forward.
Like movie night and.
Movie, yeah, yeah. Actually, there's a couple of slides coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stealing my thunder.
I'm just really excited.
Here we go. So.
Hold on, Tom, though. Before we do that, we do need to warn our Board of Finance friends that we have not yet finished that work. And we talked about that extensively during the budget process.
Yeah. We were supposed to be ahead of that.
So, we apologize, but given all the priorities we've had this year, that, that one didn't make it yet.
We, we, we all know you guys how busy.
No, and you guys, too. It's, it, there's a lot of folks that need to bring in, and we wanted to do that right. So, it's not been ignored. But we haven't been able to prioritize it yet to get it in. So, I know there was a meeting that went out recently, right on that. So.
We appreciate the support that, that everybody's thinking about this.
Folks in the Board of Finance, we're being transparent. We're going to get to it, we
So, that five thousand dollar reallocation from the senior center general fund budget, we're reallocating that. We have done a service improvement the last two years for more community special events. We really think this is the, the best way to engage our residents. Again, increasing civic pride. And we also do this as collaboration between, again, the police department, so, town, Public Works, the library, social services. We're all in this together. And, you know, as the Recreation Department is the coordinator of these things, I think we're, I'm, I'm good at that. We have, we have the infrastructure in place. And when everybody else comes in and partners with us, we can do some really great things. Some of the ideas that we're looking at, and again, my friends at the Simsbury Meadows, too, we're partnering with them. Free summer concerts. We're looking at two or three concerts per, per summer at the Meadows and construct, using their infrastructure, the restrooms and the snack concession setups. And we're, we'll be bringing in the entertainment. Spring egg hunt, spring and fall movie nights down there. We did the fall movie night last year, which was very, very popular. People are already asking about which, what our dates are going to be for this year. Summer neighborhood block parties. What my thought is for this is that each summer, we would have a crew of rec volunteers that would go to the different neighborhoods in town, the Terrifield Green Squadron Line, maybe West Mountain Park, Wheatog Park, or, or in that neighborhood. And we would just go, just a couple of hours for a, a free night of entertainment for family, for families to come out and hang out. We'd maybe have some food trucks show up, some inflatables. The rec personnel would run some games. We'd certainly get the word out about our programs. Maybe have a DJ there. But just, just a relaxed night, people, for them to hang out with their, their friends and people to see each other over the summer. We're hopefully going to be doing something on the Terrifield Green and partnering with the, the Village Association this summer to kind of test this event out. We'll have more report on that later in the spring. The Simsbury Skate and Share, we brought that back this past December with collaboration between the, the police department, social services, the library was there as well. We raised a ton of food for the Simsbury Food Pantry. It was a great event. We had Celebrity Santa, who you'll see in a minute, if he's still on the line. The, but that was cer, that was a great event. The Pooch Plunge last year at Simsbury Farms was, was well-attended. It was a great event, a good fundraiser for the, for the dog park. We hope to do that again this year. And again.
Oh, oh.
There he is. Still away. The, the summer, summer concert barbecue Family Day, we're hoping to do that either Simsbury Meadows or Simsbury Farms to show off our facilities. That, that's, that event is still in development. But those are the, these are the type, just the, the tip of the iceberg of what we could do with that five thousand and more down the line, hopefully.
Are you, are you guys integrating this year at all with the three-fiftieth?
Uh, we, we are. Well, I, I am one of the staff liaisons.
Do you guys have anything that's one of these that could cross over, be a part of it, fill in, help their calendar?
The September Fest is, is an event that, that a lot of my time is going to. So, that's kind of the rec department's time. We're, as, as we're going to get to later on, we're a little understaffed at this point from a programming perspective. So, I'm kind, I'm kind of covering both of those positions. I only have so many hours in the day at this point. So.
Yeah, I think it could even be worth not additional time, but like a co-branding opportunity where they use their infrastructure to promote some events.
They're looking to fill their calendar out. I mean, that in an honest way. Also, they could help you create initiative, inertia for some of your ventures here.
Can we just make a note to talk about the pool plunge at some point offline?
Oh, yeah.
Make sure it aligns with our risk management, et cetera.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just some quick pictures here. This is the, the pre-show movie night at the park. You can see the giant screen on the, on the bandshelf there on the stage. This is what it looked like at night.
That was awesome.
We had about three hundred, three hundred to four hundred people attend that event. It was, it was really great. And that's after postponing it and the whole mosquito scare last fall. People still came out. Couple of shots. There's our skate and share. About four hundred people for that event as well. That's all the food we collected that day. There was no admission, no charge for skate rentals or anything. That's, your admission was some canned goods, and that's what, that's what we got. And there's, there's, there's Santa. And we thank him very much for his time.
Is that Santa in lockup on the left?
So, that was a great, that was a great event. People, we got a lot of positive feedback from that. Our budget highlights this year. Again, we are still about the, one of the lowest in our, in our comparable group here of, of spending on our, general fund spending on our parks and recreation program in town. I know that because we did the survey last year, and our budget didn't change, and the other towns still went up. So, we have not moved there. And we have a, we're asking for a number of CNR projects to continue to up, not upgrade, maintain our, our, our fleet, basically, our, our maintenance, maintenance fleet and some structural facility, our facilities at Simsbury Farms. And we're going to get into those in just a minute. Excuse me, one second. Challenges this year. Our parks maintenance staff is continuing to try to keep up with the growing need for, growing need and expected demand and level of service in our parks and trails. They've been doing a great job. They, again, there's only so many hours a day and so many projects they can get to. And they work with, Orlando and his crew work with all of our youth sports organizations in town that use the ice rink to the, the baseball fields, soccer fields, the football fields in town. They work heavily with the athletic director at Simsbury High School to make sure that our, our high school teams are playing on safe, safe fields. Many of the, much of the feedback we get back from other coaches and our youth coaches in town is our fields are, are the best that they play on when they go, when they visit other towns. We're going to, again, continuing to support the Simsbury Celebrates event. As you saw last year, it was another great night with a spectacular ending. And then Simsbury three-fifty this year. We're spending, we're spending a lot of time with, we're working with them to make sure that those events come off without a hitch and are a big success and a true celebration of, of the three, the great three hundred and fifty years of Simsbury's, great three hundred and fifty years of Simsbury. We will have a, a couple of changes in the upcoming fiscal year that we're anticipating. Mike Wallace, our golf superintendent, has let us know that we will no longer be able to count on his expertise, maybe with a phone call, after the end of the, end of the current golf season. So, we will be seeking a, a new golf superintendent, but we have someone in, in line, hopefully. We will be, look, our golf and, our golf pro and our golf restaurant contracts both expire at the end of the current golf, at the end, we, we open on Monday. So, I guess I could say the end of our current golf season. So, we'll be working on, on those in fiscal year twenty-one as well. And we're going to be continuing to, as we do every day, day in and day out, evaluating how we're getting the message out to our residents here and gaining visibility and recognition for our programs and initiatives that the taxpayers of Simsbury are spending their good money on. So.
Didn't you open the driving range this past?
The driving range opened last week. The golf course will open on Monday, thanks to Mike and his team's efforts this winter and the, and the good weather we've been blessed with.
Mike, so a, a good snowless winter is not a good thing. I, I guess to some people, snowless winter is good, but to a golf course, sometimes, I mean, snow is good, you know.
Sometimes.
So, how do you, anecdotally, how did, did you guys have any snow damage this year or lack of, or damage because of lack of snow?
We, we historically always have a, a little bit of damage because we do not treat our, our fairways for winter diseases. But overall, the, the course came through the winter very well. And the lack of the snow cover since, you know, late December or whatever has allowed it to dry out a lot quicker than it normally does. So, our groundwater level, you know, when it rains during the winter, the water runs off because the ground's frozen. And it doesn't soak into the ground. So, once it started to thaw and everything, there wasn't a whole lot of water, you know, there wasn't a lot of snow at all. Snow has dried out quicker this year than normal. So, it's been a good, good winter. If I could take winters and have them all like this, I'd be thrilled. And I'm sure Tom Roy would be, too.
We're going to get to that, sir.
Sorry, Tom. You're under the bus.
This winter has allowed us to get, we've been able to catch up on a lot of work that's been deferred. You know, the guys haven't been able, you know, haven't been held up in the shop. They've been out doing tree, again, we've been trying to do some tree pruning.
Back to the trees.
Tree pruning where we can.
He's going to keep going.
Sign maintenance.
But that's actually sometimes, yeah, opposite of that. If you're held inside, you can do all of that necessary maintenance on your equipment as well, all your mowers, your, your heavy equipment. That's one of the reasons you have an off-season.
Yes. And that's a balance.
It's about a.
Let's get into our CNR projects. We're on the home stretch here. This is a two thousand four F-two-fifty pickup that we're looking to replace. It's over a hundred thousand miles. As you can see, it's he, it's been heavily used for plowing over the years, towing trailers. That hundred thousand miles, it's, it's a, it's a well-worn hundred thousand miles on that truck. We're asking for forty-two thousand for a new truck and plow. Any questions?
I have, where do you plow?
We, we plow all of the, we plow all of the parks, Simsbury Farms, the parking lots at Sims, some of the Simsbury Meadows. We do the senior housing at Owen's, Owen Murphy Apartments. The Parks Department is responsible for that. Where else, Orlando?
Owens Brook, West Street.
The trail, yeah, the sidewalks on Owens Brook and West Street.
Yeah.
So. Our, and Simsbury Farms is open throughout, most of the storms were open, just like the highway guys. We're, we try to keep it open throughout most of the storms because the rink, the rink is a winter sport. So, we, we may have during a storm, three guys, three or four people working just to keep Simsbury Farms open, the sidewalks clear, the parking lot, the parking area safe.
Okay. So, some of it's sidewalks. It's not.
Some of it is sidewalks, yes. Yep. We do not plow trails, just, other than the West Brook and, which are quasi sidewalks. Let's get into staining. We have three facilities that need to be, that need, that are in need of staining. We're hoping that they'll be done this year. This is our golf pro shop. You can see that it's been deferred maintenance here. This is one of our premier, premier facilities in town, and this is what it looks like currently. I'm going to get into pictures with the bandshell in the Simsbury Farms main building. This is the Simsbury, this is an example of Simsbury Farms main building. You can see the checking. We have, we have cedar shingles buckling at this point on this building. When they dry out and buckle and they eventually fall off, that's more, more costly repairs. This is the bandshell. Again, one of our, whoops, I apologize. One of our premier facilities in town, it needs to be done. There can be an argument made that maybe these buildings shouldn't have been cedar-sided, but they are. And we're working within what we have to, what we have to deal with at this point.
What's the cycle for those? Supposed to be?
Probably should be done every four to five years. We've been doing it.
Two to five years, I think.
What's that?
Two to five years.
Three to five years.
We're, we're about six years right now.
All right. This is another shot of, of the staining at the Simsbury Meadows. Again, the second, the shot on the right is, is the painting repairs that, that need to be made on the ceiling there. That's just one example of it. There's water, water staining. Seams are coming apart. So, that'll be part of that project as well, if we stay in the, stay in that building. Playgrounds, playground improvements, the, your board, or the budget last year made a commitment to, to start doing twenty-five thousand dollars a year toward our, our smaller playgrounds in town. What we're hoping to do is, twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't go as far as you think, just so we're, we're clear. We're, we're hoping to use the twenty-five thousand dollars from last year and the twenty-five thousand dollars we, we hope to get this year to do a complete renovation of the play equipment that's pictured here at the West Mountain Park. That's our plan. We have, we have a plan to rotate around as needed. But this is the one we've identified that, that is in the most desperate need, and, and the money would be well spent here. Our parks and golf maintenance garage, that was built almost a decade ago at this point, was built without a ventilation system. And again, as we were talking about, just working in the off-season during the wintertime, typically it is, it is cold. They're working with paint and fumes and, and on equipment. There's nothing to, without opening the large doors and letting all of the heat out, there's really no way to ventilate that space, space and keep it safe for the, the techs that are working in that, on those equipment. So, we're asking for a ten thousand, ten thousand dollar ventilation system for that garage that, that probably should have been done when the building was built. So, we appreciate your support on that. Last year, we made a commitment to start doing about a three, a three-year turnover on our ice rink, major equipment systems. Last year, this, we're going to be doing the condenser that was approved last year. This, this spring and summer, we'd like to match the control panel to that condenser. And then we'll hope, we'll come back next year, as it was pictured before, and ask for the chiller. But this, this control panel, again, it's with the original rink system, which built twenty, a little over twenty years ago now. There was an engine, engineering study done in two thousand sixteen. It was recommended that this unit be replaced with the others. And this control system will allow for a higher degree of efficiency with the new equipment being installed. So, there's, there will be a cost savings with that. And I think Jeff, Jeff just walked in the room. Our engineer did identify that it would be a, wouldn't be that long of a payback on the system with, with the savings from the energy, energy efficiency. I thought it was going to be a quick, pretty, pretty quick payback.
That's true. I'd have to look at.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have it in front of me.
It's been a while.
Yeah. The life expectancy. This will also allow us to remotely monitor the equipment, which we don't have the ability now. If something, for some reason, the Simsbury Farms power should go out, when our second shift person leaves, we may not find out about it till the next day. And that could affect our ice ma, heavily affect our ice maintenance for up to a week after that. So, now we can better adjust our equipment remotely. This is a picture of that panel. Getting on to the feasibility study at Curtis Park and, and the Performing Arts Center. The parks and open space master plan, one of the, one of the large, one of the most important recommendations it's going to make, the feedback that's come back, come back from our residents and in the focus groups, is we have highly deficient parking areas and, and obviously restrooms at Curtis Park and Performing Arts Center. The Performing Arts Center parking lot is treacherous at times. We regraded that lot last spring. We have a five-year, five-year permit to do so. But it still has accessibility issues for those using walkers or wheelchairs. It is, we're spending multiple hours out there lining during the summer from a whole different, many different perspectives. It's, it's troublesome. Same thing with that Curtis Park, the two dirt parking lots over there are structurally deficient and inadequate for those spaces. So, what we're looking for is thirty thousand dollars to do an engineering study. We have multiple wetlands and, and regulatory issues that would need to be addressed. That's beyond our scope to do so. Bringing in consultant will allow us to come up with a, a, a plan that meets those requirements and give us a solid dollar amount to come back to you with, to ask, you know, to identify what options we may have going forward as far as paving or alternative paving options for those parking lots.
Memory serves incorrectly. We paved one of the Curtis parking lots for thirty grand.
That was Curtis B. I don't believe Curtis B., Jeff might know. That's in, that's not in the floodplain, correct?
There was no regulatory issues at the time.
At that one.
I don't believe that was.
It was more a driveway paving, not a parking lot.
Yeah, that's true.
It was more we paved the driveway going, getting into, between A and B. We didn't really pave.
Yeah, but didn't the, didn't the Friends of Soccer give us the other money to pave more of it, I thought?
Up to a point. It wasn't really, it was just more going into it.
So, do we reasonably think that we're going to be able to get over the?
There are, there are options, there are options out there beside a hard asphalt pave that might be doable at those sites and be acceptable for the, the commissions that would approve those projects. So.
I think this is an important one to explore, especially for ADA accessibility.
And it's identified as, everybody in town that took our survey and attended those focus groups, one of the first things out of their mouth is you need to improve the parking area.
No, no doubt. Yeah. My thought was just go ahead and do it. But obviously, there's more to it than that. Do we need to include other sites? Boathouse, other parks? Because I know there's a lot of noise coming out of the crew team as well. Their parking access has been pretty antiquated as well.
Something we could look at. Though, this, these were the two areas that were identified through the, again, I was giving you some pre-highlights to the master plan presentation you're going to hear.
Yeah.
These were two of the areas that were identified.
The crew area is a younger population to parking in there.
The crew area is a younger population to parking in there.
Yeah, it's more limited in.
You want 16-year-olds driving off the road?
In the, in the crew area?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that hasn't been paved in, since I was born, I think, so.
Well, Mike never drove off the road when he was rowing down there.
I just said, I know there's been a substantial safety concern coming out of there due to the volume.
And I was in the 1400s.
Because it is a, it is a public-owned area. It's not just the crew team that goes down there.
I was just gonna say, the, the SPAC parking has come up quite a few times at aging and disabilities.
The SPAC is a completely, I mean, it's.
All I'm suggesting is can we get more than, than just those two sites for the 30 grand? Or is it gonna increase the cost exponentially?
I'd say no. I would just say that the water, Boathouse in particular is particularly challenging from a regulatory standpoint. We actually looked at using that area for a lay-down area, for a compensatory storage area for Riverside Road project. It was almost impossible to overcome the permits because of the wild scenic, the species, and just the impact of the reverie environment down there. So it's gonna be extremely challenging to do anything down there.
To lay a, to lay a new piece of pavement when we already have pavement?
Yes.
We've got a substantial volume down there that we often forget about, so.
Okay.
Any other questions on the feasibility study? This is an example of that park, of that parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
This was last, this was last spring before the, the regrade. That regrade, thankfully, we haven't had a lot of snow and haven't had to do a lot of plowing down there this year, so it's, it's held up better than, than previous years, but, you know.
One of the other challenges, they're not just safety, but the people don't, don't even know what is parking and what's not parking.
Correct.
Correct.
And you're ruining such a pretty beautiful space.
Yes.
So, don't, don't we line that for every show, though? Isn't that part of something we talked about at one point?
Yeah, the Parks Maintenance Staff does line, and they're reimb-, we are reimbursed up to a point by the Performing Arts Center.
Yeah, okay, yes.
So it, that does have to be relined consistently. Now, if it was a regular parking lot, we'd line it once and then be done, so.
But we have substantial handicap parking down there, and to your point earlier, folks get out of their cars and it's that, that they gotta walk through with, with ambulatory issues. It's just not safe.
I mean, we do, the dog park gets a lot of use during the, and it's not, the playground's still used during the winter, the dog park is used during the winter. I mean, you have people driving through this.
Yeah, we need, we need to deal with it. You're absolutely right.
This is the example of Curtis Park. These are the two, the two small dirt, or, the one on the right is the larger dirt lot. The one on the left is the smaller dirt lot over there.
This one looks better than the first one. Show them in the other order next time.
I was looking for a better picture. We're getting near the end here. This is, we're hoping to, to, you know, start renovating our park signs. We, most of our signs have been in the ground for many, 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 many years, and there's many different styles in those, within those signs. Orlando and his staff have done a great job of, this, this winter and last winter, of begin taking down some of those older ones, trying to do their best to patch them together with, with duct tape and glue, and then putting a new coat of paint on them to make them match what we, the new signs at Curtis Park, I'm sorry, Town Forest Park. What we'd like to do is begin rotating with Simsbury Farms, and a new, the renovation process with Simsbury Farms and Curtis Park, I'm sorry, Memorial Park this year. If, if the, the price comes in well enough, and there's enough to fit another one, we do have a sign, we're trying to, we have to put at the new Flower Bridge Park as well. But this would be, again, a five-year plan to hopefully replace all of our signs from Beldon Forest, to Terrifield Park, to Onion Mountain Park. Make them all consistent, a consistent look. People know what they, you know, they know this is the town of Simsbury Park when they see this, see this sign and, and a nice, consistent, professional look to it.
This may be more complex than I'm giving you credit for, but is this something that Eagle Scouts, to a degree, the town could partner with?
Not this particular sign. I think where we'd like to use the Eagle Scouts is on the trail signage and the trail marking. Again, that'll be noted in the Parks and Open Space Master Plan as, as something we're deficient in right now. But the materials used in these signs, that's, that's a professional grade. We want them to hold up.
Yep.
And again, we want, we want a consistent look going forward.
Yep.
Rink fencing at Simsbury Farms, the rink was, again, built 20, 20 some odd years ago at this point. Now, those fence posts are now have begun rotted out. As you can see in the picture, the fence is leaning to the left. We have, this is the same side of the rink where the, where the hockey benches are. We have town staff going back and forth using this as an access from, from the golf parking lot to the mechanical room at the rink when there is snow and snow removal processes. It's a safety fence, even during the summer when people are out there walking around the rink. It separates that area from the pond, and it's not a safe pond for anybody to be in. So we're asking for 8,000 to replace that fence. And last but not least, we have a $45,000 golf replacement mower, a greens mower replacement. That would be paid out of the golf equipment surcharge account. It is not a general fund purchase, just to be clear with that. And that mower does need to be replaced. Mike, Mike and his crew do a great job of maintaining the equipment, phenomenal job of maintaining the equipment, and as new equipment comes online, they bump it down. So a greens mower this year becomes, Mike, what, a?
T-mower.
A T-mower next year, for a few years, and then it becomes a rough mower?
Right, or something? Maybe I forgot that.
And they recycle them down, and then eventually they trade it in or take it apart for parts. But they do a great job with that. And again, that money is already currently set aside. We already have it, but we're asking you to approve it. Last but not least, the greenway improvements, $135,000 in the capital project account, again, to continue to maintain our trails in what our residents and our users expect they, in a, in a way they, they should be maintained.
I assume we have areas specifically earmarked for that improvement?
Yeah, Tom Roy can speak to more to the paving aspect. We'll continue to work on fencing. I think we're working together, working from the south end of town north, northward, more or less.
It's kinda unique because it's a project, it's, it's a shared bucket of money between the two departments. And basically, we do what we call the capital improvement work as proposed and the maintenance work. So last, last year, we did from canal all the way to the town line, we brought the stoned dust back up. For anybody who's ever run down there, there was like a two-inch litter. You talk about insurance claims and an ankle turn and everything else. And the other thing we were able to do, there's a couple of areas where the trail was sloughing off into the wetland without impacting the wetland. We actually drove down vertical posts and actually built the trail back up to those vertical posts. It was kind of a neat application, some really good nerdy engineering stuff going on there. So this, this coming year, what we're looking at right now are, are two, two projects. One being resurfacing that trail from canal south. One of the real challenges is what is the right surface? Because the condition of the pavement is not such that it really warrants a full traditional overlay. It's spot areas that have not performed well. So we're looking at, do we cut those areas out, patch those in with traditional asphalt, and then go over the top of everything with something, a thinner material that's gonna help preserve everything and keep it uniform? And then we're also looking at doing a significant trail enhancement to the Farmington River Trail, which is right at the intersection of Bushy Hill and West Street, which is heavily used by the high school kids. There's forever been the shortcut from the high school directly to the trail. DOT got rid of the crosswalk there a couple of, I think, two years ago. And part of that was they want people to cross where there's a signalized crossing. And to that end, we wanna make sure that that front entrance to that trail is more accommodating for that. So that's, some of the projects that are coming online, using both the remaining funds from the previous capital allotment and the upcoming 130,000.
I appreciate that gives me some context.
And trees.
Trees and fencing.
And fencing.
The roots. You gotta stress the, the roots.
Yeah, well, the roots are what's causing some of the issues on the trail, right? As we saw in the north end.
And it's a catch-22, because everybody loves picturesque, beautiful trails in the shade.
Right.
That's what's infiltrating the trail system.
Proposed service restoration. This is not an improvement.
I'm losing a theme here with this.
So, back in the mid-'90s, the Park Rec, Park Rec Department was at 10 full-time staff members, Parks Department was at 10 full-time staff positions funded through the general fund. Over time, that went down, that has gone down to seven general fund positions. We do, that is exclu-, it is exclusive of the two, two personnel that the school board currently funds, guys who maintain the, the athletic fields there. Our Parks and Open Space Master Plan is gonna recommend two to three additional park staff. What we're asking for is a, I'm, I'm, I'm skipping ahead here. The, over the last 30 years, I'm gonna show you what we've added here. Simsbury Performing Arts Center has come online. The town, the ball, the ball field at Town Forest Park, the Terrifield Green has come online. Memorial Park expanded by two fields. We've expanded the rink season by four weeks. The Rails, the Trails project added a higher level of maintenance and expectations for that. The town purchased the Ethel Walker Woods and its trail system. We're adding the new park at Hopbrook Landing, and we've installed and are maintaining irrigation, irrigation systems at all of these, most of these parks that we've, we've added, the Performing Arts Center. This all takes time. So this was all when we had, this was before we had the 10, before we had the 10. We had the 10, we lost them, and then we've been adding all of these things, and we haven't added any more staff to take care of it. It doesn't, doesn't add up there. So what we're asking for is, is a commitment from the, from the board and the Board of Finance to start adequately staffing our, our Parks Department to maintain that infrastructure. We're asking for a Parks and Facilities Maintenance Technician. Currently, we have our, some oddities in our Parks Structure, Parks Maintenance Department structure right now. Our Parks, our Parks Superintendent is doing, is splitting his time doing the work of the Parks Foreman, assigning job, assigning job tasks and checking on work orders. He should be working on higher-level projects. Our Parks Foreman is basically doing this job at this point. He's doing the, the general facility repairs, the electrical, the plumbing, and trying to keep up with it as best as he can, but he's not doing the job that we're paying him to do. So that's why we're asking for your help. Certainly, we're not, we're not oblivious to the fact that we would need a Parks and Facilities Maintenance Technician 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when there's, aren't, aren't these projects, these HVAC and painting projects and carpeting projects that do, that person will be assisting with the mowing, the lining, the other things that our Parks Maintenance Staff certainly takes care of, the mechanicals. But this position is needed for us to help restructure the apartment, work more efficiently, accomplish the, the task that we need to do with the staff that we have. So certainly more is needed, but this would go a long way to helping us out. Any questions?
I have questions.
Yes.
So, you're asking for potentially two or three more staff?
Over the next, we're not asking for it this year. We're asking for the one this year, and we'll come back as, as the, the further needs are addressed. And we're cognizant of the, of the, the town's ability to fund these positions as well. We're not, we're certainly not being greedy by any, by any stretch, but this has been identified as a need for many, many years. And so that's where we're at. It'll be two to three positions over the next seven years, eight years, nine years.
Okay. I have one other question. Other things, there's, there's a lot of other needs or items on your list, if you had to prioritize.
Well, the equipment, are you talking about equipment needs or the position? The position you're, you're gonna be paying for every year, that's not gonna go away.
So, equipment needs.
Everything that's on there is something we need. If you're asking me if there's something else we, we would like to have, is that, is that the question?
If, if you weren't gonna get, if you weren't gonna get all of those things, what would your priority be?
What we're leading up to, CNR is over, so we're gonna have to make some decisions later.
I'd rather hear from you.
You're, you're looking at, I mean, this is.
The building staining would happen.
This is. It's unsightly. It's, it's gonna lead to further maintenance if we defer it, defer it any longer. It's just gonna cost us more. By, by doing the three of these projects this year, we hope to get a better price than if we did one this year, one next year, one the following year.
That makes sense.
So certainly, that's a priority. We had submitted what we thought were, we have a very good cap, what we think is a good capital plan for the next six years, CNR plan for the next six years. The projects we put in this year's plan, we, we thought were all fair. Certainly, not every one of them could be, could be, could be in there. The ones that, that the town manager has chosen to push forward, they're all needed. There, there's nothing that's, there's not, that we can.
I agree.
Get away without doing longer. I guess that's the best way to put it.
They all seem fair. It's not that, it's just, it's just budget.
Yeah, to, to build on Jackie's point, yeah, we got 321 in total car, total Parks and Rec from the CNR, and 45 of it is the greens mowers. So take that out. I mean, we only spend 461 total in prior years. So unless there's a whole new pot of money that I don't know about.
Uh, nope. So, if, if you might recall, so the last couple of years, we've done, we've used the 416 payback method, but then we've also done an additional cash contribution for some of the smaller capital needs.
Yep.
So this would be, if we ultimately went with that strategy, this would be our third year of doing that. And we are gonna do, under the CNR and capital wrap-up at the end of the day, talk about that problem of, that now that we have really begun to develop the CNR six-year plan, which didn't exist previously, and talking about those baseline needs, is on average, we're looking at about, really having about $2 million in needs a year for the smaller capital needs that are falling under 250,000.
I'm with you, but we haven't gotten the Board of Finance there yet is the problem.
Right, right. So again, so what we've done, right, right, right.
So it's, it's a matter of what we want and what we can actually fund.
Right, exactly. So, under the proposed budget, what we did do is we utilized the 416 payback method for some of the CNR projects, but then an additional cash contribution to fund some additional smaller capital projects. That is somewhat, not somewhat, that is consistent with what we've done the last two years. But ultimately, right, I think over time, it's, it's that reality of, you know, 416 is, is not enough for our smaller capital needs as we began to quantify the baseline needs.
100% agree with you.
Yeah.
But it, but as I go through this, and I know we're doing CNR letter, but it's important because Tom's standing here, we've, we've got, we've got a million one in the general fund. If you assume 416, we got 600,000 plus of cash that we're gonna pay for the rest of this stuff.
Um, partially. So there are a couple of operating budget transfers in. So right now, the operating budget has $180,000 for one of the PW trucks that gets transferred into the CNR, and that was outside of the 416.
So it's 400.
And then also the, you might recall, the Board of Finance last year decided to move the police cruisers out of the 416 payback method and into the operating. So that one.
We don't get held harmless on those. Still gotta pay for them.
Yes, right. So that is in the operating, but that will be an operating transfer in. So if you take the, the cruisers and the Public Works Truck and the 416, we're at about 730 or 735,000, that we have truly kind of cash that's on hand. But in addition to that, the last two years, we have done an additional cash contribution to help catch up with some of these capital needs, the smaller capital needs.
No, I, again, I'm not pushing on it, but Jackie's really well-pointed question. We're gonna get asked to send a list up of prioritization. So staining's number one, and then I assume the trucks.
Maybe not the placekeep. My kids, I don't have kids going there, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, that particular one, it's like across the street from my house, but I'm not pushing for it, for sure. But what, it's at the point where it's danger. I mean, I wouldn't want kids playing on it.
And to take it, if we take it out, there's nothing there. The 25,000, that was a lot of last year, isn't enough to just, to go put something even similar back. That unit that's there is probably more than $25,000 back in its day. To that, to that point, the longer you put it, and this has been, and Dave, Dave Bush and Jerry, Wetchen, who are here, can speak to the, to the past budget better than I can. The Parks Maintenance Budget has been, let's just call it the, 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 the facilities, money spent on facilities has been, has been very underfunded over the last 20 years. We're not, we're not trying to catch it all up in one, in one fell swoop here. It's just the longer some of these things get put off, they become unsafe. It's gonna cost us more to, to replace some of these, some of the equipment down the line.
Yeah.
We can't take, we can't play games with the ice rink. Some of these things that we're.
I agree. You have mechanicals that are 20 and 30 years old.
Correct.
But, you know, if we're gonna talk about priority, then that would have to be a priority.
It would, because it's a priority, yes.
Over a placekeep.
But I would, I would say, though, whether you fix it or pull it out, I feel like we gotta make, it becomes a safety issue at some point.
It does, but we gotta pay for it, guys. I mean, we have this argument with the Board of Finance every year. They go, that's great. Tell us what the 1 through 10 is, and something ends up being 10.
Well, the other, the other thing I'm looking at is next year. Like, that's, that's like a million dollars more. So anything you take out from this year, right, you could potentially be looking further.
Right, right. And that's, that's one of, yeah, so that's, again, that is one of the challenges. So up until the current fiscal year we're in now, we were never budgeting for those smaller capital purchases, except for looking at it in the year that was coming up. And that, again, was something that we had identified as a real deficiency in our capital budgeting process. So this is now our second year where we are really starting to project out over the next six years, what are those smaller capital items. And so what we did is we did our best to say, okay, what are, and again, these are really investments in our existing infrastructure as opposed to nice-to-haves or enhancements. So we really took the items that we felt were the most critical, either for a safety perspective, or some other, again, what, what are the things that are most critical, and then pushing out items into other years. So, again, we did do our best at a staff level to realize, okay, what are those most critical replacement items, things that are rotted, falling, you know, falling apart, the placecapes, or what are things that are truly safety issues, like the ice rink fencing or the garage ventilation system. So we really tried to prioritize what was most urgent and then try to push out everything, everything else.
But what doesn't get picked up, though, is, is traditionally, we would have the 800,000 or a million that got transferred to the, to the, to the fund balance. And then whatever was extra revenue, generally, the Board of Finance would allow cash purchases in the prior year. So we'd get to this point of the process, we'd see that there's an extra million dollars otherwise coming in from building permits, and they would let us go pull items off this list and fund them. So it never showed up in the budget. They were purchased. So it's not that we weren't buying things, it's just, it was, it was done a different way. We've switched in how we do it. The Board of Finance doesn't let us do that anymore. And they, not, not right or wrong, but it's, it's different. So now all those items are backing up and becoming a logjam due to the change in process. Now, there's been a good reason for it. We've had tough years from a grand list standpoint. We've had state changes, you know, the retirement, all these things get shoved down on the municipality, so it's been hard. But we were buying these mowers and everything else, just not all of it went to CNR. And again, you can look back and, you know, your Amy's predecessors, there was, you know, several hundred thousand dollars every year where, I think the streetlights were bought that way, right, Tom? Or, or, you know, we, we'd all agree that it made sense, the 800,000 would come from current fiscal year, so it never got carried forward to the next budget year. So it was being paid for, it's just how and when it was being paid for.
Right, and, and.
And we've lost that to some extent. It's not the Board of Finance's fault. They've got a lot of things they gotta pay for.
Right, and, and we will talk a little bit more.